That's the same page?
Yes.
The blank?
Yes.
The blank would be three words, would do what?
My words, too.
Question mark.
Me, too.
Actually Representative Burke answered the question before I could finish the sentence.
Right, and I was like...
Had I finished the sentence.
It was a thing.
So are we leaving a blank?
No, we would like, I think Selectman Pierce and I agree that it should say...
Would do what?
Correct the sentence to read...
Okay.
Bill that would do what, and then he answered.
He asked.
So it was a question?
Yes. It... He asked, is a bill that would have done what?
So it should say Selectman Pierce asked or...
Asked. This is a bill that would have done what? Question mark.
Okay.
And then I had a question.
The reason for that is the paragraph before that
Correct.
ends with the word this bill, yet there's no introduction as to what's in there.
Right.
The paragraph below that, ninety percent of that paragraph is in quotes, but are you sure Catherine that...
It's in quotes?
It was.
You know...
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yes.
Starts on the third paragraph.
Yes, no, I read it.
You know, the fifth line down starts repeating itself.
It does.
By changing the representatives, you know, that's in the fourth line, by changing the representatives.
Oh, I see that, I see that.
I do have a correction.
Oh, please do.
On the fifth line down, starting with the word by changing, delete the rest of that line, delete the whole next line, up and then on the following line, delete the first word town. So the sentence would read, Budget Committee and Municipal Budget Towns from voting to non-voting. And if you go down three more lines, it makes reference to a tree board, as in a plant. I believe you meant three.
Yeah, right. Suppose I wouldn't get that.
Those are my corrections, Mr. Chair.
And did you have...
I did have a question, a correction on the second paragraph on page four, second to last line, it's the word should be personal, not person. Nothing personal would be added.
Nothing personal, yes.
Okay.
I do recall that.
Anybody else? Okay, on first page. On their announcements, second one, it says Chairman, the vans are said, Selectman Pierce to read the next announcement.
Oh.
Asked. Okay, any others? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstaining? Unanimous. And we have minutes from the next set of minutes. Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept the March 5th minutes.
Is there a second?
I wasn't here.
I wasn't here. Let me think about it now.
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion on these minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstaining. Abstaining.
Okay, it's three zero two. Okay, next item is announcements, and we do have a couple of announcements tonight. We have one which is from Stacy Buckley, and that's to Richard O'Brien. Actually, it's to the Board of Selectmen, I apologize. And I'll read it. "I would like to commend both the Gofstown Fire Department and Gofstown Police Department for their efforts during our recent envelope issue at Mountain View Middle School. Chief O'Brien led his team in a thoughtful, resourceful, and professional manner. At all times, the chief responded in a calm manner which instilled a sense of confidence and security for our students, faculty, and parents. Chief Sullivan was available to support in any way necessary. In a situation that could have gone wrong in an instance, actually, administration was in lockdown along with bus dismissal happening, et cetera, and all that going on at the same time. It is wonderful knowing that we have such competent and caring people working in this town. The entire Fire Department and Police Departments worked endlessly to discuss the situation with us, employ efforts to assist us, and move the situation to a successful end. All of this was done with a smile on their faces and a desire to ensure that everyone was safe and secure. While I always hope that I don't have to work this closely with either department, it is reassuring, reassuring to know that when I do, it is with care and professionalism that they both display. The town of Gofstown should be proud of both departments. Sincerely, Stacy Buckley, Superintendent of Schools, S.A.U. Nineteen." And I also want to commend both departments and all the employees that, and everybody else, I mean, there's dispatch and there's other people that work behind the scenes that never get mentioned in these types of situations.
Could I add something to that, too? Because this was not just a typical incident, there were representatives from the FBI.
Correct.
They were dealings with the state health labs, DHHHS, so it was a very complicated scene, and both departments handled that unified command very well, they coordinated with all the agencies that were required, they did a very good job. Excellent job.
Dave?
May I take the liberty of reading the next announcement?
I was gonna say to you.
This was a note of appreciation from the Deputy of DPW, Mike Hillhouse, actually addressed to the Town Administrator, Sue DeRusro. But courtesy of coffee to here, the selectmen. And it concerns the IT Department located here at the Town Hall, and specifically, one of the employees, Brian Ray. I want to take a moment to explain why I CC you so often when I write to Brian Ray. I want people to be aware of the help that he's given us here at the Public Works Department to get a lot of IT stuff done, that otherwise wouldn't be as far along as it is. The behind-the-scenes work he does is what makes it all possible. The Deputy.
Brian is an invaluable resource for the town.
He has so many times to go to departments.
As most ITV people are.
Yeah, I'll go into many of the departments to speak with the chief or something, or the department head, and there's Brian walking around, working on something, so thank you very much, Brian, and also to Neil, that he works with. So with that, do we have any other announcements?
Just to get out and vote tomorrow.
That's right. Remind everybody polls are open from seven to seven, and we just urge everybody to get out and vote.
I'll be at Bartlett when it opens in the morning.
Later on, we'll be discussing who's doing what?
Yeah, we'll be doing that a little later, okay? So with that, the next item is public comment, and at this moment, we take a moment for people who'd like to make a comment, and Vivian, you can comment, we're gonna need your name for the record.
Vivian Belondo, and I'm going to do a bob-wheeler. I'm gonna go back to the late eighties, the late eighties and the nineties, when the selectmen were appointed or elected, the new selectmen that came in. The protocol was that the family was invited to see the swearing-in of the selectmen. In nineteen, in two thousand, last time I was selectman, that did not occur, too bad. Also, the selectmen were dignified by sitting at a desk that was called Selectmen's Office in the top floor. So when constituents came in, or people came in, they could peek in the office and say, oh, you're a selectman, they'd say, yes, come on in, come on in, and introduce yourself. That was a personal, personal thing that we did as selectmen, and it was important to our constituents. Now, on my last tenure, you're put in the basement in a closet, so when you come to do anything as a selectman, you don't see anybody, you don't hear of anybody, and if you have to have any questions, you gotta go upstairs, and the doors are always closed. There's no more personal touch, I am really, really sorry to say that. However, when the policemen have a new officer coming on board, he brings them in the selectmen's office, not in the administrator, the selectmen's office, and says, I wanna swear these people in, and I want their family to come, because they're gonna be part of the community. That's the way it should be, and not only that, when we were upstairs, I had to be dressed, and I'll be with you tonight, because I'm a downdresser right now. We had to be dressed, because people were coming in to see the selectman, the head of the town. We met with attorneys, we even sat in on the union, only to know what was going on. We even met with Manchester Mayor, we met with the Water Department, we met with the Sewer Department, we made it a point to know our fellow town, our fellow city, and we did that because that was our job, and that was important, very, very important, and whatever happened, the selectmen were there. I'm sorry to say now, and I want to thank Dick Cavalcino, and I want to thank Steve Fornia for doing a good job and for serving when I served, and if that's all you're gonna get, I'm sorry, but I'm thanking you very much. I feel, I don't care how many years you've served, the family should be called in on your last night, or whenever, you're gonna have a little point of recognition, and at least say, you know what, my dad was a selectman, or my mom was a selectman, whatever, and have a little get-together, cookies and coffee and a little soda, we had that all the time, we don't have it anymore. You get a piece of paper, thank you, you know, it's not right. You have taken a big burden on yourself, for three years, six years, nine years, twenty years, I don't care what, you deserve more than that. Our employees get a better send-off than our selectmen have. That is sad, that is very, very sad, and our employees get paid a lot more than the selectmen, and our employees don't have half the, half the commitment that the selectmen have, and should have, but I feel that the selectmen now don't have that, have that commitment. It's given all to one person, and it shouldn't be. Whenever we met with an attorney, or we met with anybody, the administrator and at least one selectman was there at all times. Now, nobody goes, I don't think you even know who your lawyer, what your lawyer looks like, I don't think you know half of what your NHMA looks like, and you know, that's sad. When we did our tax things, to find out our tax rate, we all went, all of us, unless one of us couldn't make it, we all went into that office, the selectmen were the ones that had to do it. It was important, you people have an important job, and you're letting it go, the dignity of this office is going down. Please, please, stop taking control of some things. You ask Phil, we had a lot to do, we didn't just sit there. We, and when you leave there, for you two, I'm sorry, the department heads would come down. My goodness, when I left the first time, all the department heads were here, I don't, they all had a little bit of something to say, and it was nice, you know, you felt at least people recognized that you did try to do something for the town, and that's all I have to say, and again, I want to thank you both, because I know you deserve better than what you got for leaving here. That's it.
Thank you.
And I know you don't have to repeat it to answer me, thank God, because...
Nick?
I do want to say, though, Vivian, they did a nice presentation for us at the deliberative session, they gave us plaques, so it probably wasn't as elaborate as in the past, but it was a very nice send-off, I felt very appreciated.
It should be, it should be, something, you know, it just should be.
And I plan on giving both Steve and Nick a big hug, but behind closed doors, in the closet.
In the closet.
I think we've got a cake, too.
Scott, they're not dressed for it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Before you leave, Dave wants to, Dave?
I'm in the process of presenting a draft of a redesign of the first floor. Did I hear you advocate that perhaps there ought to be a visible office on the first floor for the selectmen?
It should be a visible office, because where our selectmen's office was at one time, people used to go register and pay taxes, so they'd look around, and you'd be sitting at your desk, and you'd be going over the, your bills, and they'd peek in, and you'd say, hi, come on in.
Vivian, just bear with me for one minute, because you'll remember this, remember Halloween, remember we used to meet one day a month in the daytime, and it was Halloween was on a Monday?
Yeah.
And we had the office upstairs with the bowl of candy, and the kids would come in, their moms would be going to the town clerk, and the kids would be looking in, we'd have them come in and get the candy, remember? And when they had the parade, we all stopped and we went out to the parade, so...
I think people know your names, but they don't know the faces that well, so, all right, thank you for hearing me out.
You're quite welcome, Vivian, thank you. Any comments? Any other public comments?
I just do want to say that we do know who our attorney is, we do, we sue our attorney, I mean, I love Vivian, but I just, I don't want folks getting the impression that we don't do certain things, we meet with our department heads regularly, we are liaisons to different departments, we are more in a virtual world, too, where folks send us a lot of emails, and they still call you occasionally, but a lot of folks, you know, send emails, the meetings are televised, I mean, it seems like weekly I get stopped by somebody at the supermarket saying, oh, I see you, I know you're on TV, and they talk to you, so, and, you know, I...
And Phil represents us at the NHMA.
Right. And I just think it's...
Matter of fact, I'm on another committee now, up at Municipal NHMA.
It's, you know, it is, it's probably a lot different than it has been in the past, but, you know, everybody, you know, connects with their constituents in the community in different ways, whether it be their social activities, or clubs they belong to, et cetera, so I think the interaction is there, and folks have the ability to interact with us and meet with us if they so choose, so I feel pretty good about that.
Yep.
And I just want, just historically, when I was first elected, we were meeting upstairs, and unfortunately, we had issues with having both rooms televise a meeting, the sound quality was poor, seating was nonexistent, if more than five people came to a selectmen's meeting, they were sitting in the hallway, so I think at that, at that time, we were, it would have been great if we had a room where we could, each had a desk and had the room for our constituents, but it just, we had to, we had to take a, make a choice, and I think at that time, our choice was, we need to have space for people, for the residents to come to meetings, we need to be able to televise and have people hear what's going on, there were other space needs upstairs for IT, and I think we made the best choice we could to be able to provide, I remember one of our goals was communication with the public, and I think we met that, we have plenty of meeting space now for people to come, and we filled this room in the past, as well as being able to videotape and allow people to actually hear what's going on.
Well, just to follow up on that, too, and I think part of, part of the issue that we had, because I know for me, as Vivian mentioned, and I'm sure you can all remember me calling that, saying that we're in the closet now, but it was also GTV had the issues that were up there, and as you said, you know, were down here, and what we were running into was having somebody upstairs to do, constantly upstairs, and then we had other meetings down here, such as Planning Board, Budget Committee met down here, we had to think, control it, that was up here on the side, and the chairman of the committee, and all we ever got was the video, but there was no sound, so we had a lot of complaints with that, and dealing with both, I know I was very reluctant to move, but, you know, we did, and all things considered, I think that we have few, I mean, now we have, we changed the back of this room that the court's not in here, we have a room in there for Andrew, who's back inside his little room waving, and we have a little recording, I mean, the cameras, you know, trying to address a lot of that, and, I mean, I've been on a, when I first got on the board, one of the goals that we had was this GTV, and we had put the committee together.
That was before television, which I thought was pretty ambitious.
We didn't have, we didn't have GTV at that time on it, but not...
Gutenberg had just invented the printing press.
So, I mean, you know, there are, you know, there are, you know, our, you know, presence upstairs, yeah, I mean, but I guess, you know, there's a lot of things, too, is, times do change, I mean, budgets have gotten constrained, we've tried to get the most out of what we possibly have to be able to provide the best service that we can to the people, so, Scott?
Yeah, I just, since we're under public comment or announcements, I want to publicly thank Steve and Nick, it's been a pleasure working with the both of you, you know, I think, I was talking to somebody this weekend at the Business Expo, and the gentleman even commented, he goes, you know, you guys, you get along really well, even though you don't always agree, and I think that really said it all. We don't always agree on issues, but at the end of the day, we all walk out of here with smiles and laughs, and life, and life goes on, and I just want to, you know, thank the two of you, as Vivian said, it's not an easy job, but I just appreciate all that you've done for making it a good experience, being on the Board of Selectmen, knowing, knowing the topics, knowing the, knowing the issues, and making, you know, good arguments along the way, and for different causes, so just, you guys have been great to work with.
You're welcome, and thank you, and two people that we don't normally talk about every time we leave when we give thanks is Catherine and Sue, our Town Administrator, because we're constantly requesting things, and just today, you know, back and forth with emails, so...
You get stuff, I don't really get everything.
I blocked you.
Thank you both for all the work that you do, it's unseen, but meetings wouldn't go on without you.
Thank you.
No, I do, and I think Scott expressed the, pretty much the consensus of the board, and again, publicly, thanks Steve and Nick.
You're welcome. We tried getting you Van Halen tickets for tomorrow night, but unfortunately, it's voting, and you have to be there to count the ballots, so...
Did the Board want to change the procedure for the swearing-in next week, for the two new members?
Well, what I was gonna suggest, well, no, but that's what we usually do, we usually, and I was gonna ask if any was, I know Mark has been to every meeting since probably the last six meetings, but that's usually what we do, and I was gonna talk to Kathy tomorrow, see about swearing them here at the, publicly at the meeting, I mean, that's been done, that was with Nick, and I know...
I know mine was, my wife and kids came to mine.
Even, even with mine, my daughter came last time, and I believe Steve's, your family, was Mark there here?
No.
It's a long story.
It's a long, no, 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 no.
I think that's a good gesture going forward.
I think, Vivian speaks to a good point, I would say, and I mean, I'm not saying I felt like I missed out on something, but I can understand what she's saying, and I think it has some...
But, too, a lot of it depends...
You get the drift of the conversation?
I sure do, gentlemen.
Bring your family.
Fill the room. It's next Monday night?
Yes.
Yes.
I feel bad, because I won't be here.
We can always, we can move it ahead a week if you want to be there, it's fine by me, I don't care.
Yeah, okay, very good. Okay, any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to accept the donation of $500 from Tri-Town Youth Soccer League to the Grassmere Town Hall Restoration Fund for use of the building.
So, so moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous, thank you very much, appreciate the donation from...
The usual, thank you.
Yep, please, on that. And we'll move on to Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your meeting schedule for the week is in your packets, and as stated earlier, tomorrow is elections at Bartlett and the High School between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m., and so who would like to be there for opening and...
Yeah, I have a 10 o'clock meeting with Derek and contractors over at Grassmere, so I can be in the afternoon, so the morning's kind of tied up for me.
I can do the morning, that's fine, okay.
I'll do Bartlett, I'll be at Bartlett before 7:00, so...
Okay, and...
I was gonna be at the High School from the afternoon through close.
I will be in touch with Mr. Pierce in the morning, and I'm right down the road, so whenever you, we'll make some breaks, Nick, get you a break.
About what time will you be getting there, Nick? Noon time, 1:00?
Probably about 1:00.
Okay, okay. I'll probably be there a little bit before you, okay?
Thank you.
So I think we have that covered, good, thank you.
And Wednesday is Budget Committee meeting at 7:00 p.m.
Yeah.
So same assignments, who is Budget Committee, you?
I'm Budget Committee, yeah.
So we're safe for the week, and...
Yeah, yeah, assignments will continue.
Question?
Yeah.
What's the topic or agenda on the Budget Committee? I mean, it's a day after the election, I, you know...
I think they continue their monthly reports.
Yeah, their monthly report.
Monthly, yeah.
Okay.
Which, I don't know, I mean, I have opinions on that, I don't know how, somehow, how useful some of those are, but, and they'll also elect, I would assume...
It's gonna be an organizational meeting, too.
Yeah, but that sometimes can be difficult, too, but, but, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it is.
Right the day after, because you gotta swear everybody in, and...
Yeah, but not only that, it is, because it's very pos, if you have contested races, you could, yeah, because, I mean, you, it's possible you have a recount, so, you don't know.
That's true.
But I have the authority to swear in the new members, and if you can let Kathy Ball know, I mean, I don't mind doing that, this way, she doesn't have to come down here. All we need is the papers, you know.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay, tonight in your consensus folder, you have the AP warrants, an event permit for farmers and artisan market the second Saturday of the month, May through October 2012, at Pearl Landscape, and thank you letters.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to accept the consensus folder.
Second. Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, that's unanimous.
Thank you. The assessor has recommendations tonight, 2011 tax share abatements, it's recommended for map 26, lot 18, not recommended for map 34, lots 89 and 98, and map 36, lot 50. Report of a timber cut, map 6, lot 54, that was for 2011, cut, and an attentive timber cut on the same map and lot for 2012, and an elderly exemption for map 6, lot 75.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Your second?
Second to accept the assessors.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you. You also have a memo at Tab 5A in your packets from Town Planner Brian Rose, recommending the release of $19,535.80 of recreational impact fees to the town of Goftown as reimbursement for expenses paid to VHB related to the rail trail project.
Motion to accept the recommendation to release the recreational impact fees in the amount of $19,535.80.
Their second?
I'll second.
Further discussion?
I did, I had a question, that's consistent with what was, what we had talked about, because I just, I just didn't remember, I know that there was, it's gonna come from Parks and Rec impact.
Yes.
It's the 20% town match
Right.
against the Transportation and Hinsborough Grant. Altogether, it's very close to $80,000 total, so this is one, the first portion that will eventually be moving from the, or releasing, and it's important to release this money, because it would be the oldest in the impact.
And Nick, you had a question?
I'm all set.
You're all set?
Thank you.
Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. IT Director Neil Funky requests the Board's authorization to attend an out-of-state free seminar entitled Managing Network Performance Over a Wide-Area Network on Thursday, March 22nd, in Burlington, Mass.
Do we have a motion?
I do have a motion to authorize it, I just had, I'll wait till we have discussion on something, but I'll wait till I get a second, and then discuss.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been seconded, yes.
I would, could, can we try to have him use a town vehicle to do this, to go down there, I mean, and if possible, can we use town vehicles, because I see, I see when we sign off on the manifest that we do pay for miles, and if this is something that you kind of know while in advance, then it should be, it's not like something spur of the moment, where if we have a vehicle that we could reserve, I know we have some at DPW, there's others here that occasionally can be used, and it would be...
I'd have to check with another department, because the one here, I wouldn't want going out of state, the towing would be more... The towing would be more.
Yeah, well, I was just gonna reiterate on that because sometimes that's what we have.
Well, there's some at DPW that might be a possibility, a police.
I could check on the availability of other vehicles with the other departments, but that one's not worthy to travel out of state.
Well, yeah, I mean, I just, I understand where you're coming from on this. I mean, as long as there's one available, but I just have a concern that employees, when we have this, might be expecting a vehicle and it may not be possible.
Well, and I think that's okay, but I think when you have one that if it's available and we're not paying, you know, 50 or 60 cents a mile, which I think that would, it's a small gesture, but I think it goes, it's what is reasonable if there's a vehicle available.
We'll let them work it out. Okay? Anything else on this? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. And the last item I have in the public session is a facility use policy. That was provided last week in your packets, it's also in this week, it's at 5C. Hope you've had time to review it. And discuss if you have any changes.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if the Board would consider, for the time being, to exempt the Grassmere Town Hall from the policy to keep the current use in place. Scott?
I was reading the notes, the minutes from last week and they're, did you get a copy of Newport? Or did, because they, I was reading the minutes at London Dairy and Newport Opera House.
Dairy.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, I confused it, but that they have a similar type of situation with the historic building. Have we gotten that yet?
No, Elizabeth's in the process of working on that. And we're hoping, we're very close to having, currently the upstairs can't be used because we don't have the CO yet. But we're very close to having that portion available. And the uniqueness on this building is that it's a little different because it's historically and traditionally been used by community organizations. I mean, over the years, the garden clubs met there. And the process of going forward with this has always been with the intent for meeting spaces for community with that. Part of the reason, when you look at some of this as far as the fees, et cetera, the way this is right now, if this policy were to be used for Grassmere, according to this policy, the Knights of Columbus that have been meeting there ever since they were chartered and have done all the work to the building, that, I mean, they built the ramp, that was, money was funded through that at town meeting and it wasn't, you know, stated right in it that they'd be doing the ramp. And all this other work that's been done, according to this policy, they would be paying $10 an hour to be meeting, to be meeting in there. And there's really been, that's not the intent because things are in lieu of donations. So strict adherence to this policy could cause, I think, undue burdens on administration because administration would be having to, there would be questions or situations that they would not be able to answer for that. And I just think it would cause a lot of confusion.
I agree that perhaps we need to be a little bit slower on applying this document to the Grassmere Town Hall. I see it as a, right now, it would perhaps be too much of a burden for staff here at the Town Hall to conduct walkthrough visits with a potential user.
Costs more than you would get in a fee.
That person would not, would also have to inspect the facility after it's used, to make sure it was properly taken care of. Our staff in the Town Hall isn't always, can drop whatever they're doing to rush out to do that. Perhaps there's an opportunity for a third party to be a representative, to oversee this responsibility.
Well, let me just say, the current policy that we have was developed by HTC. And along with input from members at that point in time that were using the facility. That policy was forwarded to the Selectmen who had administration review it and they, they had added a few things such as the insurance and other things, and it was handled through administration as far as the appointments. And it's worked, there've been minimal problems. There was one time, I mean, Grassmere Water Precinct meets there, they have their annual meetings there. There was one time that there was a scheduled meeting there that somehow it didn't get on the record and I went there to have HTC, but we went, and we met in the kitchen while they were meeting in the meeting room and we had a 20-minute meeting and we were done and we were out of there and there wasn't, there was a non-issue.
Along the lines I just spoke of is middle of paragraph Roman 2, it indicates the right to use the property or, you know, a property for, is subject to approval by the department head who oversees the facility. And it's not clear to me, would that department head be administration?
For Town Hall and Grassmere.
Right.
It is right now.
It is right now.
As this document gets refined, I would like to see that spelled out, that, you know, it's the Administration Department that's associated with Grassmere Town Hall. And the rest is sort of intuitive, which department chief is involved. But for you, a novice reading this document, they ought to know very clearly that we turn to you.
Scott?
I would also agree, I think Grassmere Town Hall, especially the upstairs, the second floor theater, I mean, that needs to be carved out for now because it's, there's too many unknowns and there's too much money going into that to not have more.
Oversight.
More oversight. The first floor, I think people have continued to meet there, but I'm fine with carving out the whole thing for now. There was a couple of things that I thought maybe we should just consider, I'm not saying you have to do it, and that is this whole notion of having a walkthrough. I mean, it costs more to have a walkthrough than you're gonna get your fees for. What I may, what I would suggest are two things. One, I would have a one-time administrative fee, probably $20 or $25 to deal with the paperwork, keeping the certificate of insurance on file, dealing with the initial phone calls for a group, whether you use it once, whether you use it 10 times during the year, you're gonna pay $25 administrative fee to do all the paperwork needed for the insurance given on file. And then the other thing that I would consider is depending upon the users, and that's a security for a damage type of deposit of $100 or something like that, where that could either be kept on file if they're a recurring user or if they're not, it's a one-time user, we will return the money to them. And this way, you know, it's at our leisure that whether it be a cleaning person or somebody else, when they can get over there, they will check to make sure that nothing was damaged or things were cleaned properly. But, you know, typically, when you do these things, there is some sort of a security type deposit. And that's something that could be used with discretion. I mean, if you have a group that has been, say, let's say the garden club for an example, if they have used this month after month after month and they take good care, well, you can certainly waive those types, there's a discretion to waive those things. But if you have a new group, you've never dealt with them before, I think anybody who's a landlord would ask for a security deposit on site. And then you get a little bit more relaxed when you know the, when you know the group. But I do think, though, that the administrative fee, just to do the initial paperwork, keep everything on file, and whether that's annually or every two years, and then having some sort of security deposit is not a, is not a bad idea. And depending upon the facility, too.
Well, administratively, I might have an issue, like, we've been very fortunate, let me say, that we haven't had any damages to any of our facilities by any of the groups using them. They've been very respectful, especially at Grassmere Town Hall, they clean up after themselves and there have been no issues. But if we're gonna hold someone to damages, then we need to know which group damaged it and that's why the walkthrough was in there.
I think, I mean, when you look at the facility, if somebody was gonna use, let's say, this meeting room down here, I think that's pretty straightforward as far as the walkthrough. If somebody was gonna use Parks and Rec, I would think that that's pretty straightforward as far as the walkthrough. Anybody was gonna use headquarters, I think that's pretty much straightforward.
It's Grassmere, it's the biggie.
But for exempting it from this, it won't matter, right?
You know, and I guess the only, you know, the concern that I have is, I understand why, I understand the policy, you know, having a policy, I understand that, I just have a concern that once you start putting those types of things on it, you kind of discourage smaller groups and organizations like a Boy Scout or a Girl Scout troop or a smaller organization that I can't even think of at the particular moment in time.
Have you tried paying for a Girl Scout cookies lately, because they're making some money?
But, you know, you know, but Scott, they can't even put a standout on their front lawn and sell them unless they go get a permit. And it's a federal permit that they need. So, you know, it's just.
I just, I don't personally think that, I looked at these fees, $10 an hour. And again, you might, we may waive some of these things and some of the, if there's an administrative fee, I just don't think that these things are gonna break any organization's bank, I just don't.
I agree with Phil, you can go to Parks and Rec and you can talk about the lady who puts on dance class, et cetera, and you go there and there's a small handful of kids going there and they're being provided this service and there's, there's, for what you're speaking about in that context, I would look at that, it starts to make it prohibitive and too much work to go through the process. I mean, I think there's a point where you have to look at and say, hey, we have these areas, it is available to the public, we want to utilize it, but I don't want, I think we're going a little far with, when you're talking about the administrative fees and if you're talking about proof of insurance and all these things that you, and I realize that sometimes we say we need these things, but I think it becomes prohibitive for.
That's something you can't waive.
I understand, I understand that. I understand you can't waive it, but I'm saying, but you start piling it all, all out, then it becomes, how many hoops will you go through to put a small dance class in for the kids or a small archery class or something of that nature? So I'm just saying that we need, I think we need to be careful with it, that's all.
I'm just saying, you gotta fill out a form if you're gonna have an event or a raffle. I mean, I had to fill out like seven forms for all the 250th events. Every single one of them had to get signed off on by police and fire, so I mean, there's, that's part of doing business. You know, if you're, if you're a small group, all these small groups, we sign off on them every single week where they're doing, they're having an event or a raffle or something and, yeah, it's just part of, it's part of the due diligence because we are in a litigious society and if you don't do those things, then the town has liability, whether we like it or we don't like it. So, and there's a cost to doing that, so.
Nick?
I follow the discussion, my only concern is, again, that consistency. I'm a small Boy Scout troop, I want to go to Grassmere because it's free as, for that non-public, but the night that we meet, it's not available, so now I have to go to Parks and Rec, but now I have to pay. As I mentioned last week, I'd just as soon see a waiver provision in this for the organization, regardless of where they meet, and keep all of the public buildings within this policy. So that if, if it's a worthy organization and the only night or the only time they can meet is in this location, they're treated the same way as if they were gonna be in Grassmere.
But you can still do that even with, you carved out Grassmere, can't you? For now? Because I think.
As far as what?
What I'm trying to say is if a Boy Scout troop wants to meet over here, you could, you could write something in here that there's a waiver provision at any one of these things right now.
But then again, I'm.
Not just specifically Grassmere.
But that goes to the argument of carving it out, so why would we need to then carve it out? Because you still have the ability for all of those organizations that traditionally have been able to use that facility for free.
Well, I say, I say that because I think, I've been hearing things that, that there was discussion about having a theater company go in and in the second floor, maybe at some point. Well, similar to someone who maybe, if it's a for, not-for-profit but kind of for-profit theater troop or something, well, then maybe you want to charge them more than, there'll be a different $10, so that's where it gets a little bit.
Yeah, but see, let me just say, when you start talking about that, that's part of the reason of, that Elizabeth is looking at what I looked at quite a while ago, is how they're structured. Because you get to the Newport Opera House, okay, one of the things is that they sell beer and wine. They make a lot of their money that they make, I mean, they'll have a play and sometimes they'll have food there.
You need to look at license, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Have to change the town ordinance.
Right.
Well, I, but that's what I'm saying, because traditionally, okay, they did have these, they've had weddings in Grassmere traditionally, they did serve, okay, there was no prohibition on that, okay, with that, and.
Phil remembers during prohibition, right?
You see what I have to go through? See, Mark, are you gonna be doing this to me, too? I don't think so. But that, that whole, that whole structure of how it's done in Derry, in other words, they have a board of, you know, they have a board of directors, okay, the board of directors sets the fees, okay? How that's structured, you know, so that's what Elizabeth is in the process of looking at, to try to formulate what kind of works with here and then come forward to the Board, you know, to have that discussion.
Are those organizations self-supporting, the fees support, after the renovations are done, obviously, but they support the maintenance cost of the building?
Well, it's been a while since I had the discussion down in Derry and they were. The board of directors set the fees, what they charged, I don't remember what it was, but they pretty much were. Scott?
Trying to frame this, I wasn't, I tried to read through the minutes, but as long, going back to what Nick was saying, if we've got a local Goffstown Boy Scout or Girl Scout troop, or we've got the garden club made up of Goffstown residents, these folks are paying taxes for these buildings anyway. So I don't have a problem saying, you know what, you're a community group, most of them are doing good things civically, we don't need to go and hammer you for, you know, for $10 an hour. However, you know, little different thing, we have somebody who's teaching a class on plumbing or something, a little bit different, then you have some sort of a fee or someone's doing a for-profit type of thing. But again, Nick, I'm, I agree with you, I just, there's probably, the vast majority of these things are local groups, local Gofftown people doing things that are volunteering or civically oriented and we should, they already paying tax, we should not be charging them a fee, you know, on those types of things. Like the for-profit stuff, then.
It goes back to the, how the, what we currently have in Grassmere was developed, that's why it's donation. The donation could be a cash donation, the donation could be an in-kind donation, depending on the organization. It hasn't been an issue, but that kind of thinking, what you're saying. And that's why also on that Grassmere use facility, it mentions that the users were nonprofit or not-for-profit. And the issue came up with the classes, okay, the license, the gas fitters license, okay? That is a class that's given for profit. He had no problem, he paid the fee, it came to the board of Selectmen and it was approved. So my whole point is that it works. If somebody else came in and somebody wanted to give, let's say, a dance class at Grassmere and they're charging a fee for, I have 12 students, I have a fee, that's a for-profit, that's different, okay? It was never the intent, going forward with Grassmere as a community building, what it traditionally has been, there was never the intent to eliminate those types of people from using it. But their fee structure would be different from a community like the Lions Club using the facility.
Groups A, B, C, D are not subject to use fees. There's only the other lettered groups, E, F, so forth, that are subject to fees. Perhaps there could be a graduated basis here. Perhaps there could be a graduated basis here, picking up on Selectman Gross's idea that groups in E and F category, free for two hours. But if they're gonna be a heavier demand on the use of that building and a repetitive demand, perhaps then there'd be a, a fee put in. But that would, that would honor their participation in community activities by making the room available for no fee for a short period of time. Might be two hours, might be three hours. But if they wanted it all day, well.
That's the thing, you have to guard against. You have, I mean, you have to, most of these groups don't do that. They meet, I would think, what, once a month, twice a month for two to three hours? That's really not that big of a deal. It's not like they want a room for one, for a whole day on a Saturday, every Saturday for the year. Just usually doesn't work that.
So, it's not that unusual, but should it?
Should it does, then, then that would trigger.
Graduated fee basis would, might work.
So, do we have any, do we have any direction for the town?
Well, I mean, I think the carving out Grassmere, I think that, that's, I'm fine with that. I think there's, it's, there's a little bit of complications with, with that as of now, until we get more definitive information.
Leave the title, Grassmere Town Hall in, but put, to, to be determined on it?
I think we would take it out and at the very end say, anyone wanting to rent the Grassmere Town Hall, contact administration. And we'll follow the same policy.
Right, but you do have a written policy for Grassmere.
We do.
Right, so maybe just include that with this, that this is, that's the policy, current policy for Grassmere.
Keep the title in and make reference that there's a separate policy.
Separate, yeah.
Yeah.
Separate form for Grassmere. Separate policy for Grassmere.
Separate process.
Just a quick question. Do, do we have records? Do we get an accounting for all of the organizations that use Grassmere and the donations that they make?
Yeah, they go, they go right through administration.
Just like tonight, you accepted five hundred dollars in tri-town soccer. That was for use of Grassmere Town Hall.
Okay.
And so, you'll, you have a voucher that go, and we track the vouchers that go to the trustees of trust fund. Cause that's a trust fund that it's going into.
Thank you.
The only thing that I kinda liked was Selectman Pierce's notion of, for E and F, local civic, fraternal, professional and sports organizations for E. And F is local nonprofit organizations. Maybe it's a graduated schedule whereby there's a certain number of times of uses of a building. Pick a number, I don't know, six or something where.
If they're, if they're renting it once a month, that one month is free?
Whatever, that can be figured out, but, but there's no fee.
Remember, this is facilities as well. So, that takes into your, your parks.
Right.
Your playing fields.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Yeah, I forgot about that. Yep.
I think the, I heard the comment, add a waiver in here if there is a hardship for a group. Maybe it's simply adding a waiver and putting that under the control of the board of selectmen for waivers, hardship waivers. For everything but Grassmere, cause that's out.
We always wanna waiver.
Yeah, we don't have a waiver in here.
You should have a waiver in policy.
And.
Do you want me to draft a waiver?
Yeah, once you draft something though, so that, because once you start getting into waivers, then you're gonna have to have the guidelines for the waivers.
Right.
What constitutes a waiver.
Exactly, because you have to have the same standards for any group.
Because if the administration's gonna be making them, that decision.
Oh, you want.
Well, I'm just saying, whoever's, whoever is the authority that's making that decision, granting that, needs to have something otherwise to, to follow as to what constitutes of something.
Can do that. Um, I is up for discussion.
I?
Under three, Roman numeral three, section I, political purposes. Currently.
We do allow one.
We allow, yeah, we allow local chapters of the Republican, Democrat parties to use facilities. We also allow incumbents office hours, like Congressman Ginter was, Representative was here last week.
Yep.
And those are not, we don't charge fees for those or well for.
I'm not good on three, but.
Actually, I think, I'm not sure if we've charged for the Democrat and Republican parties to use Grassmere. They've done donations at Grassmere.
They've done donations, but I think that they.
Right.
But the incumbents, when they come in, it's public information, it's, you know, working with the constituents, we haven't charged them.
Right.
Right.
And then the last one was campaign purposes. And we have not allowed that to people come in and campaign. But just so you know, we had an inquiry early on in the presidential campaign from Rick Perry to use Grassmere Town Hall. But he was out of it by the time he responded.
I mean, in, in the past, I think though, in the past years ago, we've had requests for it. And we've offered Grassmere and I don't know if they've ever, I don't think they've, I don't know if they've taken, taken us up on it. But that's, that's a while ago.
Sue, do you, would you recommend adding that to E or F? Cause that would be, you know, when you say local civic, fraternal, professional and sports organizations and F is local nonprofit, would that fall under with like those? Well, the chapter, the Republican, Democratic Parties, their.
I don't know what their filing status is.
Well, what about, what would we call them? Political? Group?
The.
The, the, well, you have the Goffstown where Republican Party, you have the Goffstown Democratic Party. To me, they fall under E and F. They would still.
You're gonna have the Libertarian Party too.
Well, whatever party it is, I mean, but they would fall under.
Do you wanna include them up there?
They would be paying.
Do they generally have insurance? Is it, is it a requirement?
I think that they do.
I mean, it's a requirement that, that.
Yeah, they did when they used Grassmere, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
They're a Republican committee, yeah.
Okay.
So, we wanna include them?
Nick?
One of the questions is G, local residents. If you had a local resident who wanted to use the facilities.
Same thing.
For campaign purpose.
But we've had requests for that.
We have it.
We have.
Well, we're getting into different, okay, you were talking about the organizations.
Talking about groups.
The campaigns.
Well, I'm just, it's just.
It says local residents.
Political candidates. That could be an out of state, which is fairly clear, but it could also be a resident who wants to rent the room as a resident. And what's the, what would the answer be to that?
We haven't allowed any campaign purposes, the use of town facilities for any campaign purposes.
Well. Let, let me, let me just.
I knew this would be a lengthy discussion on this one.
David, before, let me just give you a scenario here, okay? A petition warrant article on the ballot, okay? And the proponents of the petition warrant article want to have a place to have a public informational meeting to residents for that particular warrant article, okay? If they came to the board of selectmen and asked the board of selectmen to use, let's say, Grassmere for that purpose, I think the board of selectmen would be hard pressed to say no, okay? If that was a petition warrant article for a town manager, former government, to take the board of selectmen from three to five or five to three, which we did have that request when we had a petition warrant order to go from three to five. We were asked that and we did grant them the use of Grassmere Town Hall for public informational meeting on that. So, I think that some of those, it's, it's diff, where do you draw the line to say you can or you can't?
Issues in candidates, are you gonna treat them the same? That's the question. Whether they're political issues or political candidates, are you treating them the same?
We, we typically, we traditionally haven't had political candidates.
Right.
That was, that's been traditionally, my five years, haven't had that.
This, this is like, this is like deja vu here because for the last two months I have been working on a three-page agreement and the fourth page is an application for use as an officer in the Goffstown Historic Society, the use of the Parker Building, you know, a contract and then an application. All the same concerns, all the same fee structures and, so, for those people you reject, send them our way. And, but we do have the same constraints like in Grassmere, we can only accept donations. And, and some of our board members are concerned about, well, how do you, how do you set a donation amount?
Right. Well, if there's a waiver clause in there, if you say no, you can always waive it.
Okay, so what's the direction for the town administrator?
I think, I think we've covered our, our guidance for this evening.
Okay, so we're all in agreement that when campaign purposes for political candidates will continue and should not be allowed?
No.
That's me, but I'm no.
I'm no.
I'm for adding a waiver.
Add a waiver, okay.
Um, for somehow adding language for E and F with respect to political chapters of parties, political parties, that they fall under E or F. And I'm also, as Selectman Pierce said, they'll ask them, and I, I was, no, we talked about Nick said we, we, because everything but the use of the fields, I'd be, you know, for rooms or something, I'd be amenable to a graduated scale. Obviously, I don't think we could do that on the, the fields, but.
Most of those requests will come in from Grassmere and be covered because it's exempt from this.
Right, but what about the fields? Wouldn't that really come on the Parks and Rec Commission?
Yeah, it already does.
Yeah, it already does. So, we won't put anything in about a graduated fee because the waivers will.
The waivers will be able to deal with that.
Handle that. Okay.
Okay, and you're gonna work on a waiver?
I will.
The other thing that I would hope is that we could do as much of this online as possible.
We can do an interactive forum, put the policy in interactive forum.
And then encourage people to do that, to do that. This way, when it's filled out, it's electronically stored and.
Yeah, it'd be easier for that room that way.
Stand in your certificate of insurance.
All right, anything else on this issue?
Let's see.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Anything else? Sue, was that all you have?
I think you covered it, yeah. That's all we have for public session.
Okay, so, let's see, going back, we covered everything over there. So, we are now at Selectman's discussion. Do we have any new business? Okay, old business, we have a couple of issues. Okay. Nick, you had a question on old business or not?
Um, when you say a question, we had last week's topic to bring up. I had, I did have a question, not a question, but there was a, a response from our public works director on the porous pavement.
Right.
Could I just read that?
You can.
Sure. Says the porous pavement was part of the project plans from the beginning. However, it was not an integral or necessary part of the public drainage system. It was proposed as a test for a BMP for stormwater runoff. Everybody's okay with that?
Yeah. I believe so, yeah. And you had another issue?
Well, I guess I'm okay with the porous pavement was part of the project plans from the beginning.
Right.
Cause that was my understanding. We saw the plans, we were given presentations. From that point on, I have a question, cause it was never, in, at least in the meetings that I attended, was never presented to the board as a, an experiment, a trial, not an integral part. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I mean, I, I remember having discussion of it. I mean, I can't say exactly when we had the discussion.
My understanding of the whole porous pavement, was it, was something new and it was? Something that they were looking at to see how it would work and how it reacted.
I knew the whole project. We had never tried it before.
Yeah, you know, including the, the porous pavement part because there wasn't just porous pavement there, it was also lined up.
On the shoulders.
On the shoulders also. So, I mean, I understood it as just something, they were, as it was something new and to try and see how it would, how it would.
Function.
How, that was my understanding of the, most of the, the reason the project went in this manner.
But I, from here, I draw, so if tomorrow they decided, we're, we're just gonna pave over the shoulders cause they're not an integral part of the drainage?
That I did know.
That it's not a part.
I thought he talked about that. He, I remember Carl mentioned, he goes, if it, if it doesn't work, we can simply just pave over it. It will not impact, I remember him saying that.
Well, that's actually, it was based upon, that was one of the questions that was asked, what happens as we go down the road.
In terms of the maintenance piece, because I think we didn't, we had a.
And this goes back.
This is difficult to remember way back.
But that question, it was a question that was asked to Carl.
As far, as far as some of the timing on this too, okay? This was before the project was even completed while we had issues, okay? About the project being delayed and everything. And then we had issues about that. And we've had that discussion. And quite frankly, uh, part of why, I mean, we also had, under the situation that we were involved in, we had many meetings with attorneys. So, some of the discussion that we had, I can't recall whether it was in discussion with attorney or whether, exactly where it was, but we've had those discussions.
Correct, we did. I agree with you, but it was after the fact.
No, it was before the project was completed. It was while we, we were so going through the process of our concerns about the delays of this project. We had many meetings, I remember, because I remember Scott was chairman at the time and Scott had met with the lorry.
And we had talked about, what if we didn't do porous shoulders, what if we just did asphalt? Because there were so many issues with.
Right, because we were at the point, we were so fed up, or we were even determined to not even do the porous pavement, just to pave. Could we do that?
Cause we, we had cost overruns and we actually eliminated portions of the porous pavement shoulders. For the cost.
Yeah, I don't.
I'm done tonight, but I guess if everybody's okay with this, I just have a problem when there's a portion that is really useless as far as everything I've gotten and yet we spent the amount of money that we did on that section. I mean, my understanding, we could've just put the pipe in on Lamson Ave, put the gravel back and it would've been done. We'd have saved ourselves sixty thousand dollars.
I'm not sure that's the right number.
It's higher if you add everything in. Sixty thousand is just for the porous pavement.
Carl said it was less, it's sixty thousand was.
I don't even wanna get into that because we don't know, okay?
We would've saved ourselves thousands of dollars.
Well.
Had we just put gravel back. So, I, I guess I'm just.
There's a little bit more to that discussion, but I don't think we should get into that discussion tonight. And I don't think we should lead this discussion into that discussion.
Okay, I'm just saying, I, I'm troubled by this, cause I was never led to believe that this was just something added. I was always led to believe that this was an integral part of the whole design. Maybe the design itself.
Nick, I think you just said, you just said that we could've just put the pipe in, but we, with the porous pavement. The porous pavement is not an integral part of the project.
According, and that's, you're right, according to what we've had, but I never remember anyone coming to us and saying, you know what? We could put the gravel down, put the pipe in, put the gravel down, it's gonna cost us X dollars. Or we could then spend X dollars and put in this piece as an experiment.
We're rehashing the engineering of this. The time that I've had this discussion was quite a while ago because when you're digging up a pipe that's that size and you put the material back in the ground, you have to prep the material to cover that pipe anyway. So, the argument of, of, is it two thousand dollars or is it twenty thousand dollars? I mean, we can have that argument all night long and we can sit here and we'll never, we're never gonna conclude. David?
So, we're never gonna conclude on this issue. What are we, what's the goal of this discussion?
It was just a question I raised and I apparently have the answer. Thank you.
Okay, is there anything else on the old business?
It's be private property or industrial roads and.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I looked through this and a lot of attention was paid to parking lots. But in several meetings ago, one of the residents was riveling off some roads. I didn't see any roads in here. There was a mention of Story Hill, Saunders, old Trolley Hill Farm or. I didn't see any roads in here. Uh, there was a mention of Story Hill, Saunders, old Trolley Hill Farm, or, and there, there are probably, I, I thought that there was in the neighborhood of six to eight private roads that were in question, um, and that we are now gonna be soliciting these people to see if there was some, if it is their private property, that's right.
Uh, in nineteen eighty-five, I'm passing out the article that was at town meeting, Nick, you'd asked me to print that off. That you see if the town will vote to authorize selectmen to plow the following areas, which municipal records failed to determine are public roadways. And there's a whole list of a Montreal Street, alley between Goffstown Hardware and Paint Store, Winnie Miles driveway, Nazar Place off Gorham Pond Road, Plumpton Road off Tibbetts Hill, Will Bennett's Place off Tibbetts Hill, Kidder Court, Mrs. Tarz off Henry Bridge Road, um, two short gravel roads on Hill off Harry Brook, Riverside Drive, Lynchville Park by Volkman, Millet Road, Lynchville Park, Welch Farm Road off Shirley Hill, Riverview Park Road, two side roads from bottom of the hill, a paved section to end of gravel sections, Dumont Park Road, Upaway Farm, Stan Hope's off Route thirteen north, just beyond Snook Road, Story Road, Mrs. Claps off Gorham Pond Road. And that article passed. That was nineteen eighty-five.
Well, it's almost thirty years later, so.
And in nineteen ninety-three, the selectmen revisited, and they did get a deed, um, was brought in for Upaway.
Just so that everybody, we're all clear here. The information that was requested a town administrator to do some research, um, this is something that's come up in the past, but part of the difficulty is minutes in a time period that need to be reviewed cannot be searched electronically. Okay, they have to be manually gone through. And that's part of the difficulty with this. And you have two issues when it comes to roads. We're asking as to whether or not the road is, the, the classification of the road, whether it's a class five or a class six, what it is, it's pr- uh, private, or what is the status, the, basically the status, and what, how do we deal with that road? And Public Works deals with it in one way. The fire department deals with roads in a different way, such as access to roads that they need to get to hydrants, dry hydrants, uh, whatever, for their purpose of fire protection, for, for the neighborhood, for the area. And police have a different view of roads. So, when you're asked the town administrator for the classification or the status of a road, it's not something that's right there in front of her fingertips, that she could press the button and the information comes up. It requires some time to do the research, just so that everybody is clear. So, we had discussion approximately four or five weeks ago about this, and during that discussion, I had sugge- I had asked the, the town administrator to start working on that, because it was a lengthy process, and I had some records that I reviewed, some records that I had, but they, they didn't help that much. I just, very small, one was a memo back from nineteen ninety-two or nineteen ninety-three that I gave her, to the beginning of it. And she has to, she has to work on that, that's what she's been working on. And some of the, she tried to address some of the, the specific questions that came up, and I guess the, um, the question of, of Carl was those two portions of road and the five parking lots areas. So, now, if we're going to address these parking and go through these again, as we've done twice already, she came up with a suggestion as how to deal with this.
We got, um, just new information from when I wrote this on Friday. Arrowhead, I, I've got the plan for Arrowhead. Arrowhead was laid out as a public road, so there is no private part of Arrowhead.
Right.
It's been accepted?
It was, see, there were different ways, at different times and, uh, points in time, and laws change over time. But it was laid out and dedicated as a public road.
So, that's one off that list. And, you know, that, that's what happened. So, here we have the selectmen's, we have a, a meeting, it's set in a, in a set of minutes, and we go on, and everything goes forward. Ten years from now, the same question comes up, well, where's the proof? And, and that's, that's the issue that we, that we, that we're dealing in front of us. So, it's not something that you can just press the button on, F-six button on a computer, and they all come up.
And wouldn't it be nice to get to that point? It would be, uh, it'd be a nice layer in GIS.
But, all that being said, how many of these private roads slash driveways are we aware of? It's less than twenty, correct?
Well, I wouldn't necessarily say that they're, that they're driveways, because we've gone through this.
Okay, I, I'm just trying to look at quantity.
They serve as one house.
All right, so, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I don't even think the number is that high. I, I, it's probably more like, less than twelve, but, and, and if you, and let's just say Arrowhead is one of them that, okay?
That's laid out, yep.
Okay. Then, there should be some sort of a file at town hall, electronic, probably good now, to, so that if the question comes up five years from now, ten years from now, you have the record to say, these are the twelve roads that are, that are in question now, they will be in question fifty years from now.
That's exactly what a GIS layer would do.
Right, well, but, I'm just saying, for the time being, just list them out, and then we should have a yea or nay as to whether or not we should be continuing town services on each and every one of those roads. So, Arrowhead we can cross off, but there are maybe some others where maybe we shouldn't cross it off. I mean, if it truly is, if it services one, um, one area, and you know what? I, I, I respect what the voters did in nineteen eighty-five, but we're almost thirty years later.
But Scott, Scott, just back up a minute. What the Board of Selectmen did in nineteen ninety-three was a result of a, of, of, of a court ruling that we had to readdress all these roads back, and that's the timeframe that is not electronic minutes.
Okay.
That's the timeframe issue. So, the issue is, we sent letters out, she has a copy of the letter, I gave her my complete file on priv- plowing private roads. It was an issue in ninety-three. The town, the selectmen sent out, and Vivian could have told us all about this too, she remembered. We sent the letter out. All these people, all these roads that were on here, that we did?
Yeah.
We sent the letter out. She has, she has a copy of that letter that went out, and people came in forward. Now, some people submitted the information to the town administrator at that point in time. Some people came into the selectmen's meeting, so this information is scattered over a time period. I remember one came in with a, a deed from the seventeen hundreds, that it was laid out as a town road.
Yeah, Martin's Farm Road.
There you go.
Seventeen sixty-seven, laid out and accepted by the Board of Selectmen, according to the History of Goffstown, volume one.
That's why we plow that road, it's a town road, laid out in seventeen sixty-seven.
Upaway Farm, someone came in with an actual deed showing it was given to the town a long time ago.
Right.
Some have deeds.
So, you ha- so, if that's the case, then we, then, uh, uh, is there anyone that's not in?
Saunders Road was a class five road, it appears in the deed of Thompson's land, you know, they are, the sources are varied, and where all the, um, justification lies.
But are there any that are up in the air?
Uh, Dumont, Dumont Park Road between Lynchville and Danus is, appears to be private.
Dumont is, that section, i- is the connect though, and, and that one does serve the town, and I'll say it in several ways. One, when they're going through with their plow routes, et cetera, that cuts off incredible amount of time, that's one.
Yeah.
Second piece is, that's also the pump out for when the fire department needs water.
Dry hydrant there, right?
Yeah, that's where they, in other words, if there's a fire, so essentially, and I would also tell you, it's just, it's, it's not a situation where someone goes down and there's a handful of houses. There's three hundred houses down in those, those parks communities.
Second access.
It, that, if you ask anyone, they wouldn't even know that's a private road, they'd just say it's a road, because they're going from one community through the other, I mean, hundreds of cars go through that, uh, in a, in a day, you know? And part of the, part of the town getting the benefit is that when they plow, they don't have to come back all the way out of one car.
I guess my, my question.
To the other, and that's where they pull out the water. So, I'm saying, that one has a real purpose to it.
If it's a naive question, I apologize, but then why aren't we just saying, we'd like to make this a town road?
The owner of it does not wish to sell. We would like to purchase it.
Sell. But they're okay with us plowing it and everything?
Well, the other option is, there's four ways to get a road, one is by prescription.
Yeah, and, but I'm saying, because I mean.
A judge declare it.
There, there was even a request to, for the town to plow it, because it was better for, for the town to do it that way, and the owner does not wish to.
We have an estimate from one of the owners down there, but you're right, there's one owner that we don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, Nick?
Just looking at the list, um, on the memo from, from Sue.
Okay.
With the, the various parking lots. They all pretty much make sense. Um, in fact, eighty-two Center Street, when you look at the actual GIS, parking lots, drive eighty, that's, um, Grassmere, the Hillside Methodist.
That makes sense, because the parking for Grassmere.
It's actually all town property. If you look at the GIS, it's just the building on property, but everything else, even the drive and the back.
Makes sense.
My question is sixty-seven Henry Bridge Road.
That's my question. That was the one I had. What's the, what's the benefit on that one?
Wait.
Uh, the one on Henry Bridge?
Yeah, I know, but which is sixty-seven?
It's the.
Goffstown Christian Fellowship.
Fellowship. Where's the community benefit on that one?
I mean, these others, I see parking on Main Street, um, parking for the ball fields.
Do we have, um.
You have the food pantry and the, and the, and the, you know, I mean, I just didn't.
There's town, town employees that park at the Episcopal Church parking lot.
Heavy snow here in the Main Street.
Mm-hmm.
Traffic parked on the shoulder would add to congestion.
Where?
You know, the, three Main Street, St. Matthews.
No, I, I, my, my, when I, when I read through it, the one that I questioned was the one on Henry Bridge, more so than any other, I, I kind of understood the others.
Yeah, along here, the question here about Hillside?
No, that, that, there is no question there, because that's actually all town property.
Oh, yeah, but there also, the fact that we traditionally plowed it because we've used the, uh, the crypt in the back.
Right, to get down to the cemetery.
Right.
But even that appears to be town property as well.
Yeah, but I'm just.
So, the one you're questioning is the Goffstown Christian Fellowship.
Well, that one was on my list, I, I had that checked off, and the other one that, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Express, I am a member of the Lions Club, but I, I just wanna know what's the difference between the Villa Agostina School and the Lions Field? Because we went through that a year ago, where the Parks and Rec said, hey, we're not gonna mow this, okay? Because it's private property, okay? And really, all that, all they serve is tri-town soccer, they have, uh, field hockey, um, they have, uh, they have, actually, they have, um, both boys, uh, baseball and girls softball practice on Lions Field, and the school uses the baseball. So, we said no to that. Um, but then the Villa Agostina, we use that for Little League, um, which services, obviously, a lot of Goffstown kids, Dunbarton, New Boston, now Ware, Ware kids, but I, I see that as no different than Lions, you know?
We don't mow Villa.
What? No, 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 but no, you don't mow the Villa, but you take, but you take the trash, you take the recyclables, and you plow it.
Can I jump in there for a second?
Go right ahead.
You can have apples and oranges there. And essentially, what we talk about when it, when it became for the Lions Field, I know you're, I know you're partial to it, but part of it was the idea that Parks and Rec does no longer have the manpower to do all these different fields, and it was just one of those tough decisions, how do we handle it? In other words, it's not, within the budget, there wasn't, there isn't enough to take care of all the fields and things they need to do now, and so that's where that decision was reached. Regarding the Villa Field, we all realized that, that parking lot is used greatly by Goffstown Little League. And one would say, well, that's a private organization, while if we did not have Goffstown Junior Baseball, it would be, we'd be, we'd be, we'd be scrambling to figure out how we could handle it on the Parks and Rec.
So, is that any different than tri-town soccer?
If I may finish, it has a large public benefit to that, okay? Now, when you start going into the soccer, that was our private soccer clubs. But Parks and Rec, you, you can go private soccer, or you can go private, private clubs, or you can go within Parks and Rec. We do offer that service. I think there's a difference there.
I, I personally don't think that you've, I just don't think you've, you've made the distinction. I mean, you, you have Little League, private organization. You have Goffstown Lions Club, tri-town, private organizations, both youth oriented. Yes, we don't take care of the Little League fields, but the parking lot, we, we plow it, and we take away the trash, and we pick up recyclables from the Villa Agostina School. I, I just, I just don't, that's the other one, I just don't see the similarity, I mean, the difference between the two. I think that the Villa Agostina, um, arrangement is no different than, than the Lions Club one, uh, in the sense that they both are sports oriented, they both serve the, the community of Goffstown and the greater Goffstown community, because junior baseball is probably sixty, seventy percent Goffstown, the rest is Dunbarton, New Boston, and soon to be Ware. And it's, they're both private, um, and you can make the argument, we don't have the facilities to have a tri-town soccer situation either, because we don't have the field. So, um, I just think that they're, they're extremely similar. When you said to me, when you said that, you know, it is true, Parks and Rec didn't have the resources and the manpower to take care of these fields, but then again, we also hear every time during budget season, we pay for road salt, we talk about very long plow routes where, where we're doing this, we talk about the cost of tipping fees for our garbage, uh, the fact, you know, so, we're, we're obviously, we're paying to dispose of the garbage at the Villa, we're, we're paying to put salt down and to plow, which, which if that, if they weren't doing that, they may be doing another road. So, I, I see them as extremely similar, but yet we treat one differently than we treat the other, which I think is inconsistent, I think it's wrong.
I, I thought the other public benefit of the Villa was that they're educating some Goffstown students, and that that.
At nine thousand dollars a pupil who costs us within the school.
And they also educate a lot of Bedford students, and a lot of Hooksett students, and a lot of Manchester students.
I, I will just say that the school.
And by the way, people should disclose if, if their kids went to the Villa or were on boards of the Villa, I disclosed, that was in the Lions Club, by the way. Oh, okay, fairness.
The Board of Selectmen has been addressed by the school board. I don't remember exactly if it was a selectmen's meeting, if it was in a memo, if it was in a, 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 a letter, but there was input from the school board, or it might have been a school administration on behalf of the school board, okay? That there was a benefit because the Villa kept students out of the Goffstown School District. And that, that was a benefit.
So, should we, right.
I'm just, I, I'm not, I'm not saying it to argue with you.
Right.
I'm just adding a piece of information to the.
But, we don't also plow Edu Care and others that provide all-day kindergartens. We don't, we don't plow the YMCA, which is also, um, good for the community, which is a nonprofit. I'm just saying, this is a pretty slippery slope, guys, and, um, and personally.
You don't see a public benefit there?
What?
I'm just asking that question.
What?
You do not see a public benefit within the, the Villa parking lot?
I most definitely do.
Okay.
I most definitely do, and I've softened my position on that.
I'm just, I'm just gonna add one thing in.
But I also see the public benefit of a field that is on Union Street that is just as, just as vital to this community, because if, if the Lions Club sold it and we put condos on it, and you didn't have a, a, where would the baseball team play, Steve? Just curious. Where would tri-town survive? And that's the same argument that you just made, if the Villa sold the baseball fields, the town would be scrambling for Little League fields, we wouldn't have Little League possibly because of it.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give it to Nick, but I'm just gonna interject one thing here on this discussion. I remember when the Villa Agostina was, we were about to lose the Villa and the fields. What happened in this community? About the, this, about how it was such, it was gonna impact the community so much that we were gonna have to go out, we needed fields. We had articles, special articles for how much money to buy land for fields, so I think.
We did buy it.
We did.
Uh, uh, right.
We bought them, and we did buy it.
So, I think, I think that there's some type of a value that's there, and I think it's shown, but I'm gonna give it to Nick.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
He's just arguing that the Lions.
I'm just saying that the Lions Club is just as much, if not more, a member of that same club, so.
It's obvious this argument is not going to end tonight, there's enough questions on these roads and, and some of the other issues. Um, and fortunately, we're heading out of winter, hopefully, if you believe the weatherman.
Hopefully.
We're, we're, we're out of winter. But what I would ask this board, and while I can't set future boards, I can give a suggestion, as one of your goals, maybe before next winter, is to address all of this, and clarify, do all the research, clarify all the roads, and keep in mind, because you know my position on Lamson Ave, um, the residents have been keeping tallies of students, and the students are using that road regardless of whether or not there is a, um, do not trespass. do not trespass sign. I was there this morning for a brief period. In fact, I ran into our town administrator on the way out, counted half a dozen students just in the short period that I was there. So I, I would ask this board to seriously look at the public good that still exists and hasn't been extinguished on that road when you consider all of this, and at least before next winter. I keep referring to, Steve will be watching as long, as, as well as I will be.
Well.
That you come to some conclusion and, and some policy that addresses everyone equally and fairly as to their public good and whether or not services are provided.
And I don't think anybody disagrees with you, and I think that's the reason, or at least that was the intent that I had when I said to the town administrator to start the research on this, because I stated that it's probably, it appears that it's about a, a topic that comes up about every ten years that needs to be clarified. And hopefully, this time, we could do it finally, which we tried to do ten years ago, which was tried to be done in nineteen eighty-six by that, by that warrant. Things changed.
And maybe we put another warrant and clear, clear up for some of these roads. I, I, it's, it's, it's an.
It's an, it's an issue that doesn't go away.
Issue that keeps resurfacing and it's not, it's, it's not good for the residents who live on these streets or on, have these driveways, and it's not good for future boards of selectmen to have to, it's a lot of time and it's a lot of uncertainty for the residents and it's, it's not, it's just, it's just not a good thing. And, and personally, I wish we could just make a, a lot of these public roads and just be done with it. I, I don't understand why people would just, wouldn't say, it's a road, hey, it's a town, you're taking care of it, you're gonna plow it, you're gonna maintain it, it's yours, baby.
Some people don't want, they, they want the maintenance, but they don't want a public road.
I, I.
Baby.
I've noticed in other communities with, you know, the advent a few years back of nine-one-one and all roads then having signs after intersections. Other communities, I see a lot of roads that's right below that says, private road. Do we have any street signs in this town that'll label it private road? You know, there's a, there's a name for this.
There are, I mean, like on Trolley Farm, I mean, it says private there. I mean.
It's really not.
Regular.
What? But it's not.
Probably, that's a, that's an extension.
Of Wetherly Hill, but it said, on a tree or something, it said, I drove up there. It, it says private. And it's not. I drove up there. I know.
Well.
But I, I'm making reference to a standard highway street sign that says right below it, private lane, private road.
Well.
There are some.
Rather than just an individual sign staked up somewhere. I mean, it could be something, if, if the result of all this discussion comes up that there's two, three, four roads that are truly private, we ought to label them that way.
You know, you know, getting back to this whole waiver of municipal liability, et cetera, and, and, and these driveways, et cetera. You know, it really should not be a, a situation where, oh, well, you know, I think that the Villa provides a public good. There should be established criteria. And if it's established criteria, then it doesn't matter what club it is, what group who owns it, if it serves a public purpose and it's a defined role, what that public purpose is, and if, then, then the town should, should, should take ownership and, and, and provide some of these services. And to me, to me, I think that's wrong. And we have, you've had, whether, you can make the argument that whether it be certain citizens or whether it be certain groups don't get the services, well, others do. Maybe because of they, they feel a certain passion for, for one or the other. And I said this two, two or three years ago. Yeah, you can go down this list and you can say, okay, I can just understand why we do Saint Lawrence or Saint Matt's, but then you'll have the, the Kingdom Hall of Jehovah's Witness saying, well, why aren't you doing mine? You know, so I, I think there really should be a, a rational basis for why you're doing it. If, if, if town employees park in these lots and it alleviates, then, then maybe that's the reason, or if it's, we have a community, events, and there's, it's overflow parking, that, that's, that's a valid reason. If it's servicing five hundred kids for a sports program where the town cannot physically offer that, which is the case with Little League, and I hate to say it, is the case with Tri-Town Soccer, and the case of baseball, high school baseball, then, then there's, that's the compelling case. And it, and it should be more clear cut. And it shouldn't just be at the whim of, oh, well, a board. It really should be more.
Does the Villa charge Little League to use their fields?
No, it's like a dollar a year. It's just a formality.
So they don't charge, so they don't charge Little League, but they're really charging the town. So the town of Goffstown is actually paying probably close to five or ten thousand dollars a year for baseball, for, for junior baseball, because if that were not the case, then that's what they'd have to pay for their recycling and their garbage and their plowing.
Because Lions charges.
Because Lions charges Tri-Town, but now they also, they'll have to take care of all the fields themselves and do all those other things, so.
Do they charge a high school too to use it?
They do. They charge the high school five thousand dollars, yeah.
Who charges? The Lions?
Lions Club.
Does the Villa charge the high school to use the fields?
Does the Villa?
Does the Villa charge to use the fields?
The Villa doesn't use the high school fields. The, the high school doesn't use the Villa.
Yeah, but do they charge that kind of money to use the field?
At Little League, no. I think Nick just said a dollar, right?
Yeah, it's a very miniscule.
No, that, that, that was just my point, okay.
But I guarantee you, Phil, that if the town no longer, if, if the town tomorrow said to the Villa Board, we are no longer plowing or taking your garbage, you're recycling. I highly doubt that they would just, for one dollar, give those fields to junior baseball. Doesn't make any sense. I doubt that they would do that. It's a quid pro quo. Everybody knows it. It is. Because that's easily a five thousand dollar a year expense for plowing and garbage pickup and, and recycling, and that's, and that's what's going on, but it benefits Goffstown Junior Baseball. So they don't have to then spend as much on their programs because they don't have to pay, you know, they don't have to pay for the renting of the fields, whereas Tri-Town has to spend money to.
But Parks and Rec doesn't use any of the Villa fields?
No, no.
They used to a long time ago, but they don't now.
I remember my daughters had T-ball.
No.
They used, they were at the fields.
I think with Louis Street, I think that, that changed some of the things up and, but no, they don't use them.
Okay, well. It's on the list. Okay, Nick?
I want to have a good argument before we, these guys laugh, so.
No. I, I do want to just, two things. One is, you need to remove recycling because recycling is provided on public and private roads because it's a revenue producer for us, and that's, that's not an issue as far as recycle.
Depends upon the time, depends upon the year.
Well.
That's the, the ordinance states that we do.
Only thing is, is after tomorrow, we'll know whether or not, I mean.
And the second.
After tomorrow, we'll know what?
After tomorrow, we'll, we'll, we'll know whether or not some of these things might have to be completely readdressed and.
Right, depending on what happens voting wise. But I, I just want to give my last plug for Lambs and Ave because the public good that existed for forty to fifty years still exists. It may have been a sign that's been put up that protects the property owners from liability. They didn't put up a chain link fence or a barbed wire fence. The kids are still coming through there. So I just urge this board to, to look at it from that perspective and, and consider that that public good still exists with the addition of the questionable drainage structures.
Okay. Any comments?
I'm good.
I figured you'd say that. Okay, we're gonna move on. Is there any other old business? Okay, committee report, sewer commission.
Yes, the sewer commission met seventh of March. It was a, they're a few steps closer to getting an agreement with Manchester, who handles the surge for the community. There's been a, the three other towns that put surge, pump surge over to Manchester, Bedford, London area, and our town. All three have finally reached an agreement on various levels of demand on that surge plant and the volumes of demands. So the agreement has been reached between the three towns, and Manchester's happy. So the commission is reviewing that document, and I anticipate they'll be approving it. This board is interested in the mass road paving, which is under, being accomplished by the sewer commission, with the work having been done last year with the new sewer line. The project engineer, Hoyt Tanner and Associates, they did send out a letter to the contractor doing the work, giving them certain terms that have to be accomplished, for the finished, their project. And it's up to the, the firm Cardillo to respond to that letter, perhaps indicating that there's money involved beyond the scope of the contract. So there's still some give and take of the contractor asking for change orders and then the commission responding to those change orders. All that has to be done before the contract is technically closed out. The sewer commission is very aware that Public Works wants to have that contract resolved so that Public Works can lay out for this, for the town, a definitive plan for paving.
What's the deadline on this?
On the paving, you mean?
No.
On this, on the. This is, this is.
A letter, a letter was sent to Cardillo middle of last week. They have a certain amount of time, I believe, two, two weeks, maybe a little bit more to respond. Then the sewer commission has to look at that again.
Scott?
I'd like to make a motion that we have the sewer commission in our meeting next week to discuss this. I'm not playing this game again. It's Mar, it's almost middle of March. I'm sorry, David. I mean, I know you're only representative here, but, or we can put on the reader boards, if you don't like what's going on, call the sewer commission.
Well, let me, let me just, let me, let me say something, okay? I understand where you're coming from. And I understand why you just said what you said. But I have a concern of us making a motion, voting on a motion, to have a elected board come into us. I think.
Well, okay.
Okay?
You invite them.
Exactly. I, I don't want to be giving orders. I'd rather be working with.
I like the folks on the sewer commission. They're good people, but I dislike when residents chew my ear out, chew, chew my ears out because of these projects. I dislike it when I have business owners in Pinnardville who are now going into their third year. And, and then when, when we get a report like this, I mean, it's not as if we didn't know this in November, December, January, February. I mean, this is when it's snowing and you can't do road construction. And then what's gonna happen is, we're gonna be doing this project right smack in the middle of the summertime when these businesses are looking to make, you know, some of their money. And that's my concern.
Yeah, Scott, Nick?
Was there any discussion to, given to, to scheduling as far as night, night work versus in the contract?
No. It, it, it's not an appropriate subject for the work that has to be done. The, the task was to, to have the existing firm come forward and say, what is their plans for finishing the contract as the contract has been defined? And they're either, they're gonna say, yes, here's how we're gonna finish the contract. It could be at no further cost to the sewer commission.
What's included in that scope of work?
There's punch list items as well as paving.
Yes.
But is paving included in there?
Yes. But not curb to curb. The contract, as we know, calls for just the, the trench wide paving. And there's also a punch list that is considerable on roads that pavement has, has been damaged by their equipment in the vicinity of their, of the work sites. And it's the, they're asking for the firm to restore those roads to good condition where the pavement has been damaged. So there's, there's cost, all these concerns. The firm has to respond to those costs. And it's part of the dance steps of working with a contract that's already in place. And yes, we would like it to proceed faster, but those dance steps are taking place at, at, say, you know, we're not happy with the rate they are, but they are progressing.
When do we start the dance?
Wait a minute. Nick has a question and then Steve.
I guess, thank you. I, I would then say that probably some of that night work is an appropriate conversation to have with them because I remember our Public Works Director was telling us that a majority of the work involves the resetting of manholes. And with the sewer work, I would assume a lot of those manholes are over the trench where the, where the sewer lines were put in, which Cardillo would have to raise anyway. And I would assume it's gonna be a different price to do that work at night versus during the day. So I think there are portions of that discussion that need to occur with them. And it would be appropriate to do that if, our intention, and I would, at least the last conversation we had, was to try to get much of that work done at night.
Let's take an assumption here that the contract with Cardillo is closed out. And our Department of Public Works becomes the general contractor for the full width paving. And of course, prior to that is all the adjustments on sewer structures, covers. Public Works would contract this out to a paving firm. The paving firm would be responsible for all the lowering liftings of the sewer line as well as the paving. Your issue that could some, could all or some of this be accomplished at night, that could be part of the RFP released by our, you know, the general manager of the project, Public Works. It would, the paving is already over budgeted to do the full width paving. This board has agreed to throw in fifty thousand dollars as part of that overpayment, you know, over the, the increased cost. But what, if you're asking for night work for some or all of it, it's gonna drive that cost even more expensive. And that cost is coming out of the sewer commission. At some point, they're gonna say, town, help us out more, or we can't afford it.
All right, you gotta follow up and then Steve.
Thank you.
And then.
Just as correct.
Scott's getting antsy.
Well, this, the paving company, let's assume it's Continental or whoever.
Something like that.
They will come in and pave. They don't raise the structures. The structures are done separately, usually in advance of the paving. Paving's really not a concern to me because that's gonna get done quickly. A lane at a time. They'll probably do that in a week or two.
I'll disagree. It's part of the, could be part of the Continental or a firm like that.
It all depends on how the RFP goes out, whether there are subcontractors of the pave or, or, okay, but that's a material.
Depends what they change order out of Cardillo, right?
I would just like to see that discussion occur throughout all of the contract discussions versus afterwards, because in, in their mind, I'm sure they're figuring in a cost to raise the structures during the day for those that they're responsible for. And if it's gonna occur at night, there would be an increase in costs and that needs to be taken into account. Steve?
Just trying to get some timeframes on this. Can you give us some timeframes regarding anything on this project at this point in time?
DPW would like to do this work whilst school is out.
Raising the, the covers.
Finishing the project, which includes all the adjustments of manholes and the paving, milling and paving.
So we're saying, and, and maybe I'm saying this improperly, that we're saying, let's close out with the other company, is what you're saying? And the money that's left is gonna be enough to cover this process here, less fifty-five that we had voted on? Is that what I'm kinda hearing here?
Doing the work we've just discussed is an additional cost over what has been provided through grants.
All right, do we have a cost, co, do we have a?
And that overrun is being absorbed by the sewer commission?
What is the cost of raising them up then? That, that's a separate.
Roughly, I, I'm not gonna discuss the cost of manhole cover. You know, typically, it's three hundred dollars or three hundred fifty. You know, typically it's three hundred dollars or three hundred fifty dollars.
Well, I'm just asking a simple question.
Times-
I'm, I'm going to say-
Five dozen.
I guess I have, my question is going to be, and I guess I get a little frustrated with this, is that they came to us, what month, last year, when, we, we felt it was going to get paved last year, the whole road and everything done.
It was too late in the season.
Late, well, we, we actually had promises that it would happen. It didn't happen. I'm sitting here in March and now someone's saying, well, jeez, we didn't think of all these things. Well, what the heck was happening back in the fall? I, I mean, and it's not on you, I realize, I'm just saying, what's, what's happening back in the fall? So now, like you say, you're playing this game, somewhere along the line, someone's asking for some money is what I'm taking out of this. And I'm trying to get out of here.
Very, very good analysis.
What is the amount of money is my question.
Negotiation on the money is driving it. And that's, that's not going to proceed at a pace apparently you're happy with.
Okay, but hang on a minute. Let's not beat up on the messenger. Dave is only the messenger here.
I wasn't beating up on Dave. I wasn't beating up on Dave.
Well, I mean, you know, he's not.
It's, it's not his project. It's not his project.
I understand, but the questions you're asking, you're asking questions of Dave.
Well, and Dave may not have the answer, I understand that, but I would expect to-
I don't want people to get frustrated with the messenger, that's all.
I know, I know, but I, so the reason we're going with that, and I, is that somewhere along the line, I do agree that, that the sewer commission, I mean, someone has to sit down and say, here's what's going on.
Are you next?
I'll, I'll let him go, he's going to finish it. I know he's going to finish this. Go ahead, I'll, I'll get off the stump. Go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead, Scott.
Go ahead, Scott. He's, he's, he's busting over there.
Scott is anxious to be the rep to the sewer commission.
Well, I was going to make a suggestion. I was, I was going to make a suggestion if the board would authorize Scott to go and meet with the sewer commission.
That might be easier.
That's where I was going. That, I think Sue is right. I mean, or someone said, you know, we can't demand somebody, we can't. But we can go to their meeting. I think we should go to their next meeting and the more the merrier. And we should try to get some answers to this. And, and I think the frustrating part is that the last, last year, we, in the summertime, we talked about, you know what? We had some issues over the trench patch and we really should go curb to curb. And this board, in about three weeks, made a decision to fund it curb to curb. Okay? Then, you know, we can't do it because we're going to be up against, we can't, we can't squeeze it in, et cetera. Okay?
Can I follow up just on that comment? Because it goes right along, because the representation we got was, yeah, the weather-
If you give us permission now, we might be able to get it in.
And, and even after that, it was like, well, you know, the temperature's kind of not right. And if it, if it, if it is right, we could get it in, but then in the end, it didn't. But from what I understand here, there were contract issues and that road was never going to be paved.
It was not.
Last year.
Yeah, there's some punch list items that have to tap towards the page.
So, so, again, I get to the, you know, the representation, representations we get here are not always-
The total story.
The true representation.
So, so the other thing too-
Well, they may not have known that there were punch list items.
Yeah, I, I don't, you know, from, just hang, from, from one's perspective here, they may not be, but by the messenger-
Well, I'm not talking, although this is not a reflection on David at all.
No, or anybody else that came here, because that may not, I mean, the contract is with the sewer commission. So let's just, Scott?
You know, the, 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 the issues that I'm having is, you know, many, but we have Pinardville businesses, of which if you look down the road, there's a lot of them that are not in business anymore. They've had a rough, rough last couple of years due to road construction, by-ran bridge, you name it. We all recognize that. We all know that there are many who don't like the zip code thingy, okay? And now we're going to go into year three of a road construction project. So, you know, in a town which I want to be as business friendly as possible, I don't feel I'm doing these people justice. So I think we definitely need nighttime construction. That is not even a, that's not even a, you know, we should hope for it. I think it's almost a necessity. However, that being said, whether it be the DeLoree issues that we had down here, whether it be this one, we've got multimillion dollar projects and, and somebody is the project manager. Somebody has to be held-
It sounds like you'd be willing to fund the extra cost?
Okay, no. I'm willing to hold-
Well, why, why are we discussing it then?
No, because I'm willing to hold, someone needs to be held accountable when these things don't work out. Now granted, we all know that there are sometimes will be weather delays or, you know, somebody orders the wrong pipe. If those things happen, those are contingencies and you build them in into your schedules. But you don't have a three-year project. I mean, somebody has dropped the ball here. We knew last, last summer that this thing was going to go, we, we, we were quickly asked to go curb to curb so we can do it in the fall and it didn't happen. Now all of a sudden, we got contract issues. Well, why didn't we know about that before? Who was responsible for that?
There's no ball being dropped here. If the, if come July and August, if that road isn't repaved, then, then you could say, yeah, there was a problem.
I'll tell you something.
July or August?
July or August. Grab Randun once again, I'll take the buck.
If that's all it's going to be to make you be quiet.
Well, wait a minute, you're not going to be able to get it because the road won't be paved, they can't make the delivery.
North Garden won't be able to make the delivery.
Can I come back and talk, can I bring all the business owners from Pinardville with me?
July and August.
You're on the record. Like, I'm good, I'm done. So be said, so be written.
Well, wait a minute. And I, I said, don't beat up on the messenger.
I love him.
That was worse than beating up on the messenger. I think you just hung him.
It just, it just, it just wouldn't comment because I'll be gone also. I, even when we did that vote from, 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 from curb to curb, and I realized with the contract, but when they had come here originally sewer commission, they talked that they'd be paving the road, they did not say, oh, we're going to be paving over the trenches. And when you look, and I would tell you, it's so big. I don't think you could do pave the trenches because there'd be no, there'd just be little slices of road that was left. The whole thing is a trench.
We'll just pave the trenches and we'll just go back and do this, you know?
In fact, if we hadn't paved the trench, I think we could do the rest of the tire with a wheelbarrow. There's not, there's not that much left.
You know, all, all do, all fairness.
You missed your calling, you needed to be a general contractor.
And all, all fairness here, okay, guys?
Insurance is not your line.
Listen, and all fairness here, going back, okay? I mean, you're talking about when representations were made about the project.
We all thought it was curb to curb.
But, but, no, 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 no. I, the point I, I want to bring up, okay, is when we had this, when we had discussions regarding Cardillo, okay, we were all praising Cardillo compared to the other issues that we had in town. And I just don't want to name names, okay? But I, for one, and I, I think the majority, because, and, and what I was, feedback that I was getting was a comparison, and Cardillo was felt to be doing such a great job that-
In traffic, in traffic management.
And, no, and not, not only in traffic management, but the actual job, because you go down there and the way the guys would be working, they'd get stuff done quick, right away, and get out of the way for the traffic to go by, okay? People had made comments to me about how great that was. So in all due respect, when we're sitting here having that, that, a, a projection of that contract, I think we're all in the expectation that everything that they're telling us is going to get done because we are looking at them in a positive way. So let's just, just try to put it in perspective of where we all were at that point in time. So, I mean, just, you know, hindsight's always twenty twenty and it's always easy to look back, but when you look back and compare everything, they were getting thumbs up from people on the work, so.
Well, I'm not, I'm, I'm personally not have anything negative to say about Cardillo, Cardulo, whatever the firm is. I'm just trying to, we, we've been, we've been getting representations of different timelines and the representation that we got last summer was that if you approved the curb to curb now, we think we might be able to squeeze it in. Okay? The representation, representation to this board was, no, the temperatures are going down too quickly, we don't have that sustainability of the, of the warmer temps to pave, which then leads me to believe, and I think led everybody else to believe, that as soon as the weather gets pretty good, we're going to be able to finish this project. Now, we learn, not really, because now we're talking about buying out a contract, having DPW do some of the GC work. That's an entirely different explanation than what we heard not, you know, four or five months ago. And I would think that if you're going to have disputes over contract, that the project manager, one, would know about it, and two, would try to fix those disputes in the months of November and December, in January and February and mid-March, so that come the time like April and May when you could pave, then you're, you're in good shape. So, but I'm assured that we're going to be, we're going to be good, you know, before August, or I'm going to get another order of-
July or August, July or August?
July or August.
So I think the sewer commission, the day after they met, a letter did go back to the contractor. And I, I would, I, I'm believing that-
Does anybody call the contractor?
The pressure to get that letter sent out the day after the commission met here last week was, it was helped by the discussion from this board that we needed-
Right.
Things to be moved along.
And who is the project manager? Is that Hoyle and Tanner?
Yes.
Okay. So-
Hired, ended up same contract.
Okay. So, again, and, and that's, that's, you know, so maybe that would be helpful for, you know, for Jim, Steve, or Catherine to explain to us, hey, you know, we've been trying to keep, Hoyle and Tanner didn't tell us and told us now, so somebody's got to know.
Didn't he manage another project?
When is the next time sewer commission meets?
Do you have to schedule one there? I don't.
No, because they, they may have been thinking all along, yeah, we're, we're all set to go. And then all of a sudden, Hoyle and Tanner calls them up and say, oh, we got some problems. You know, I don't know.
When did you have the last meeting?
Seventh.
Oh, so they won't be meeting until probably the seventh, that, that, that week of next month?
April seventh?
Second Tuesday of the month?
Yeah.
Yeah, tenth, April tenth.
Just bring the duck sauce, that's all.
We're good.
We have the rail trail and the Mass Road Trail.
What's that?
What's the next subject?
Next subject is EDC.
Oh, yeah.
What is slow with that?
Oh, ooh. I would tell you, and, and, you know, honestly, this is, this is my last night, and I would say that it would benefit the board and especially the next two members coming in, because there is a lot going on. And our assistant town administrator, Derek Horn, has been doing a lot of good things working with that, with, with EDC. And I think it would be wise to bring him in, have him show you what's going on regarding some of the projects and some of the plans that they're talking about with, with, you know, regarding, regarding especially the CTAP, they're, they're talking about Southern New Hampshire planning. And I think, and he's got some very interesting maps and diagrams he can show you, but more than anything else, one of the things that, that was spoken about, besides the expo, which went, which was this, this last Saturday, was that there's not much presence going on regarding how EDC works within the planning board, the selectmen, and also within the staff. I mean, we, everyone knows those pieces are there, but I don't think they've gelled as good as they should. And we talk about economic development and, and I, I guess I placed that on a higher importance level, but I don't think we, I don't know if we give the amount of time that we should be giving to something like that. So I think it would be wise to, to schedule in Derek and have him come down, explain what's going on, what's, what's happening, and see how the board can work with the, you know, the board of selectmen can work with the planning board and also work with the, work with the staff within, within the building. I think it might be wise. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things happening and it would, it would do you good to at least spend a half hour, an hour with them just to see. I'm just going to leave it that way.
Okay. Any questions of Steve?
I have a comment. I was speaking to one of the EDC members and, you know, I just asked a question like, you know, anything like in the works in terms of projects? And, and the response was kind of interesting in that a lot of these folks have been really hitting the pavement. They've been working, they were at the business expo, a lot of the EDC members, I was there on Saturday, talking to all the business owners, talking about the town's website, et cetera. But in terms of some of the economic development activity within the community, we know that we have corridors where we could develop. We know we have existing parcels that if rehabilitated could be the engine for greater economic development within the community. But one of the biggest challenges is that trying to get a current landowner or current business or something to invest or to make a transaction to make something happen. And sometimes you have people who are just unwilling participants. They, they may own a parcel of land and they may wish to just not develop it. They're, they may be older and they just don't want to be entrepreneurial and sell it, or they, they just don't have any desire. You have other situations where the landowner or property owner wants an exorbitant amount of money for a parcel of land. So there's a willing developer who wants to do a project, but you have an unwilling seller. And we have a lot of that.
Realistic.
Right? We have very, we have some unrealistic landowners who want to be compensated for property that is just not market based. So from what I'm hearing, we do have investors who are willing to invest in Goffstown properties for development or redevelopment, but we have a challenge in unwilling owners to, to do that. So it's not a question of financing, it's not a question of having good decent projects, it's really, you know, the, the, the real hardship is now, how do you convince people who own property to, you know, to do something? And in some cases, you can't because they just, they just don't want to do anything. And that's really, that's, that's one of the greater, one of the greater challenges, aside from the things we've talked about perennially, and that's infrastructure issues and, and things of that nature. But we've got a good, this group is now on there, they're, they're pretty good. They have a lot of connections, they're working pretty hard, but that's one of the, I, I don't know if you heard the same thing, that's one of the challenges that we have.
I'd like to say, I think, I think it'd be a better, I mean, normally EDC, when my time here on the board, EDC is one of those things, you, you kind of met, we had a little report, we go into the month. I think you have an energized group, I think they have some interesting things on the table. I think it's worth taking a look and get a better understanding of what, what, what some of the projects they're looking at, some of the, some of the problems, some of the roadblocks in the way, and also trying to look at where those touch points are within, within the groups that we have within the town, how you can facilitate and move forward. But I think, I, I think it's worth having them sit down.
Yes, we haven't, you know, we had a briefing, I think Tony Martz came in and talked, that was different, that was the industrial corp. And we, they talked about, I'm trying to think of that area on one fourteen where we were, haven't heard anything. And I, I think Steve is right. I think that this board needs to drive that more, where every month, we want an update from, or every two months, we want an update from EDC. We, we should really be making that in the forefront. And I'm not knocking some of the other things that we've done, whether it be rail trail activities, conservation easements, other things that we do. But I, I think that we need to put economic development in the forefront and make it a feature every couple of months, then get a report to drive the results more.
So this is going to be your two fiftieth for this year?
Yeah. We've got to do something, you know? Okay.
Nick? We, we talk about that communication between boards. I think in this particular instance, one of the most important communications that can occur is between EDC, the sewer commission, and some of the water precincts, so that long-range planning is going hand in hand with what the development ideas coming down the road are. Because maybe we forego some of the sewer line expansions into residential areas and concentrate on getting sewer lines into those industrial areas.
But the problem, and, and I've said this, is that we don't control that.
Right.
Understood.
So just like we can't-
But a conversation may get that ball moving.
Right, but I'm saying, one of the difficult things is that because we are so, because we have so many different political entities, two water precincts, a sewer commission, board of selectmen, that in terms of trying to drive or go towards a, you know, be on the same page, we have independently elected or entities that they're, they just focus in on what they, that they're focusing in on. And that's not their fault, but yes, would it be a little bit easier if, if there was one charge, everybody was all on the same page? Yeah, but that's not the case. And it hasn't been the case in a long time.
Well, I think some of that is, as you said, you have, there are separate entities. And there could be a particular, something's a particular issue with one entity that they have to address, and another entity has an issue that they have to address, okay? And when they prioritize what they need to do along with this expansion that someplace Okay, and when they prioritize what they need to do along with this expansion that someplace else, unfortunately, they have to put that, they can't put that on the front burner because they have another issue that they have to perhaps statutorily address.
Right, but I think, I don't know if there's any creative way, but let's use, say, the, the, the water precincts as, as an example. I mean, is there any way that the town can assist the water precincts in speeding things up or s- I don't know, find, whether it be.
Well, one thing I have to say though, is when we have the project that's over, the Tetro Drive project, we do have a close proximity of a connection between the two precincts.
Right.
Okay, so that is, that is where there has been some coordination and stuff. I mean, it's not completed, but at least it's there that if it needed to be done, uh, it could, it could get done. Uh, so, I mean, we do have some of it.
You, you mentioned.
David, you look like you.
Yes, uh, you mentioned the connection, uh, between the two precincts.
It's not an actual connection, but there, there's a close proximity.
The connection's being made on Elm Street. The pipe, the pipe has already been bought and delivered.
Okay.
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
That goes to the kindergarten, and that's where it stops.
No, I'm talking between Grassmere Village and.
It's connection to the Grassmere.
Oh, in, in another section?
No, yeah, on Elm Street.
It's my understanding that the Village precinct ends right around Glen Lake, the, the kindergarten. It's also my understanding that the Grassmere Water Precinct, that line doesn't even get to the transfer station, if I'm not mistaken.
It's my understanding connection's proceeding on Elm Street.
Okay, that's a different connection, but that's.
Long-term or short-term?
Oh, he said the pipe is there.
This summer? They're gonna connect the two systems?
They already have, they bought the pipe last year.
Yes.
No, I know that, but is it, I thought it terminated at the kindergarten.
Oh, I'm not sure.
My, my understanding.
Maybe you're right.
My understanding, the connection was moving forward to Grassmere from the Village precinct.
So they're Big James Lane, you're saying that there's water underneath Big Jane, I mean, on that part of Elm?
Wherever the connection has to go, Scott.
Oh, I, I didn't know that.
But I was talking about the other side of, where they had been working.
There's some grant funding for that too, to connect the two systems as they, uh.
All right. Any other questions on that? Any other questions on EDC? All done? Steve?
Thank you, Steve.
It was done for a while.
I'm just, you know, they continued on and you were very successful, successful, so I was just checking to make sure that you had all the bases covered.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. Planning board did meet, and there were four basic items that they dealt with. Uh, one was a presentation from Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission regarding the energy, uh, energy chapter for the master plan. And my understanding is that it is a required section by statute, that there be an energy section, uh, in there. And there was a presentation from Jillian Harris, and, uh, it was regarding the first draft of this proposed chapter, and, uh, planning board members, uh, had to, uh, the end of March to get some comments in on that, and, uh, Jillian hopes to have a plan finalized, uh, to be adopted by the planning board by the end of April. Uh, also, there was a time, there was a time extension request, uh, hearing for more time to build the approved Goffstown Harvest Christian Church, but the applicant, uh, had a, had supplied a app, uh, I'm sorry, had submitted an application for a building permit on March fifth, and they, um, that day, I believe it was that day, they submitted a correspondence, I think it was electronic, um, I, I don't remember if it was a letter or electronically, um, but, uh, they were withdrawing the site plan extension request because of the fact that they were in the process of pulling the permit, and, um, they didn't need the request.
One overruled the other.
Well, yeah, along that, yeah.
Building permit, you don't need an extension.
Right, right, well, they had, right. And then there was a conditional use permit hearing for, um, proposal to co-locate an additional three antenna on the, uh, existing water tank that's up at St. Ace. There are already, uh, several, uh, antenna on that tower, and that was, uh, that was approved. And, uh, they also, uh, we did receive the resignation of Carl Foley, uh, who was an alternate member of the planning board, and, uh, the, uh, there was a request to ask the selectmen to send a letter of, uh, appreciation to, to Carl, and, uh, I think, you know, Carl was, uh, Carl was, uh, uh, I think he was a, an asset to the planning board because he was, uh, familiar with quite a, quite a few issues that we had to deal with, and he had some, uh, some very good insight into that, so with that, uh, it's okay with the board that we send a letter, that we have a letter drafted up for that, okay?
Planning board doesn't, I mean, I just, does the planning board typically do that? Because there are independently elected board, I mean.
Well, I, I understand, but they asked the, the question, I had no problem with it.
I don't have a problem with it either, but do they send something?
It was, it was asked, the planning board did ask through the chairman, uh, you know, for this board of selectmen to, uh, to send the letter, and I had no problem with that, on behalf of the board. So, we'll go ahead and, and have a letter drafted up for the next signature folder. And, uh, last but not least, there was a, uh, discussion, uh, about a property owner at, uh, sixty-one McFarland Road. It's a, it's a class six road, and, uh, apparently, uh, new property owners, uh, are requesting, uh, building permit approval for a year-round heating system. And, uh, they, uh, it was suggested that they get all the necessary information that they, uh, were going to need to present that to the, uh, the board of selectmen. For that, since, uh, that formal vote, uh, does lie here on this board. And that was it. Scott?
Just going back to what we were, just a different subject, this will be new business, but, um, going with Vivian said earlier on, and, and Carl Foley's, uh, that, you know, the letter we're gonna send to Carl. I think, perhaps part of our rules of procedure, we need to think about recognition, minimally a thank you letter to people who serve on these committees whose terms expire. So let's just say, for an example, there are several members of, say, the budget committee who are deciding that they're not gonna run for reelection, but they serve for, I don't care if it's one year, maybe they serve for three, maybe they serve for six. But I, I think that minimally we should be, um, every, this time of year, we, we should be sending a thank you letter, thanking those folks for their service on a committee or a commission, because they're almost, you know, invariably, they're all volunteers. And it would be a nice gesture, at least to, at least know that they're appreciated, and to at least recognize that the time and commitment that they made. And that's regardless of whether we, I mean, I, where all of us philosophically agree or disagree with their positions, they, they took the time to represent, you know, the community and to have a voice in, in the process, and I think we should do that. I don't know, I'm sure it might be twenty letters a year or something of people who are outgoing, but, um, I think it would be something that we should, we should think about, and it's not too late to do it this year. Just to put that, you know, compile that list, especially if someone ran for reelection or said, but maybe they didn't, you know, at least acknowledge the fact that, you know, thank you for, for your service.
I, I understand what you're coming from, and I brought this up in the past and some of the things that were said to me, and I'm just gonna pass this on, it doesn't reflect anything on anybody or anyone, okay, but what was brought up, uh, when you start something like that, one thing that you need to, uh, keep in mind, what about all the people who served in the past that didn't get something, and you're starting, I'm, I'm not, I'm just, it was brought, I had brought up, I had brought up about recognition, like recognition pins for somebody serving five years, ten years, or things along that line. And that was the issue. I mean, I wa, I, I, I was pretty adamant a few times about something along that line, and one of the reasons why the board never went forward with, with that is if you start a program like that, what's, what do you, you know, people who serve for.
Gotta start, gotta start sometime, yeah.
Well, I, I know, I understand.
I think you acknowledged that you never did this in the past, and.
Well, I'm just.
Probably should have.
I'm just saying that that's something that you need to deal with, because a lot of times you have an unintended consequence of a good intention. Okay, and I mean, I'm not trying to throw cold water on it, but I'm just trying to bring up a point, and, you know, that was, that was the hurdle, that I was never able to come up with anything that I could convince anybody else on the board was a way to initiate a program.
Well, my whole thing is that I think this would be the time, if we're going to do it, you would do it over the next week or two, you would send out that thank you letter to people who are no longer serving, and if we were to wait or postpone it, if you wait six or seven weeks, it doesn't have the importance, and I, and I think if you're gonna do it, you would probably, you'd always do it in March.
Sounds like an agenda item for next week.
You know?
Sounds like that.
Yeah.
Your signature folder will be full.
Well, that gives, it gives Sue the opportunity and Catherine to, to, you know, to go through the list and see who's, um, you know, who's, who's terms may expired, or who may not be seeking, you know, reappointment and, um, you know, those types of things.
Yeah, well, we have it open for the month of March for appointments, but we can do the elected officials for next week.
Right, right, exactly.
That didn't seek reelection or didn't get reelected.
And then shortly thereafter, right, it's the folks maybe who were appointed to, to a position and who chose not to.
Okay, it's an agenda item.
And I'm, I'll, if you want a pin, I'll, I'll vote for pins, Phil, to make you feel better.
I don't know how it feels.
Or to make me feel.
I know, there was all different levels too, you know, pins after five years, and then a plaque after ten years.
Right, and, right, and to have, and to have, to have, to have a, um, and we had this a few times, okay? And, you know, um, you have to remember, um, where we had, um, a recognition dinner. Uh, once or twice, we, we.
Did?
Yeah, but I'm trying to remember, it, it was, yeah, we did it through wellness.
Communities have, communities have it.
We had, we had a, something at the Barnard Park, a barbecue once.
Yeah, well, I'm saying, we did a few things through wellness. Okay, we started and, and.
Actually, the selectmen cooked for staff once, I remember.
Exactly, we did out here, we cooked, we did. Yeah, no, no, we, we did, we did it. Yeah, uh, we start, we had, uh, started that, and unfortunately, I think part of it was, uh, was budget, budgetary, uh, issues.
It really is, yes.
You know, and I mean, and that's, that's how some of the things, you know, uh, unfortunately, sometimes when times get tough, and you have people that, uh, you know, your unemployment starts going up, and, uh, you're gonna have a, uh, a party at the town hall to recognize the employees, you get concerned as to, you know, how that looks in the community, and, you know, you get sensitive to that.
We should do things for the volunteers, we should.
Yeah, I mean, we've had, we've had town reports dedicated to volunteers.
Well, we do that, we've been, but see, we started that, we had the volunteer of the year, you know, and we've, that started, right, right, yeah, we've started that, and before that was Fred Platt, and. So, um, yeah.
You know, different ways of doing things, and then, you know, uh, boards come change and ideas change and, you know, uh.
The board will be reviewing its rules of procedure, and they'll draft something for volunteer recognition also, and then you can decide what you wanna do with it.
Yeah. Yeah, because that's one thing is that we, um, we survive on volunteerism in this community. Without volunteerism, we'd have nothing. With that, uh, any other, uh, report on the zip code meeting?
I would like to make a summary of that meeting.
Could you please?
Thank you, we were all there, weren't we?
Oh, we're waiting for the two-fiftieth.
This is for the public.
Oh, for the public?
It didn't attend.
There was a, uh, public information meeting on Thursday at the high school, uh, for those people to gather information, uh, dealing with basically the zip code, potential for a zip code change for those who have, uh, it was addressed as Reed Manchester, New Hampshire, three, one oh two. Potential for that being changed to Gulfstown, zero three zero forty-five. And, um, I've got a summary here of, there was many questions asked, many questions answered, but I boiled it down to about three here, and I'm gonna cover them. Uh, what is driving the change of the zip code? It's residents who have had issues with delivery of goods and services, primary drivers of the change. The town also supports the change for public safety reasons, and, uh, due to the loss of town revenue. The school district also supports the change because it clarifies, uh, helps out on school enrollment process. A decision by the postal authorities to actually change the zip code and the, the name of the, you know, of those people in one oh two is based on a survey that they'll be mailing out to the postal patrons. The postal service develops the survey, the possibility it's only gonna be one question, do you favor this, yes or no? The surveys will be mailed out by the postal service to each mailbox in Gulfstown that has a one oh two address, and potentially in the first two weeks of April. Uh, there's gonna be some type of mark or designation on the actual survey form to, would, uh, prevent it from being copied and mailed back in. The residents will have two weeks to respond to this survey. And it's a majority vote of the respondents. And one of the questions asked at the high school was, well, what if the majority vote is one vote? The postmaster there at the time said, the one vote carries.
There's no recount?
And I, I believe the surveys are being mailed back to our regional office in Maine for, that handles the Vermont, New Hampshire, Maine area. The postal service will notify the local officials of the survey results and then release it to the media. If the change takes place, there was a question is and answers dealing with, dealing with the physical process of changing the one's address, and, uh, if it's approved, it's, it's not locked in concrete, but let's say it could be effective on the first of July. The postal service has a, a lot of leeway there as to when they would actually change over the date, but, uh, right now it could be one July. And it's up to the postal patrons to notify banks, lending institutions, credit card companies, utility companies, insurance carriers, cable providers, friends and families. I've done this in the military through many moves, moves, and it is a cumbersome process, but it can be methodically addressed. If mail is addressed to the previous zip code, after that change over date, the post office will do their best to, to deliver the mail to you. They mentioned, uh, the potential for a one or two-day delay as it's repackaged at the wrong zip code facility and sent to a new zip code facility. If people were to receive a package or a certified letter that requires a signature, uh, they'll be, and if they're not at home to receive it, they would be going to the post office on Church Street to pick up that package. There will be an advantage in that the residents who wish to have post office boxes can do that on the Church Street facility. Right now, the Lamy Street facility does not offer post office boxes. But they, and it also mentioned that post office boxes are available at the Bedford Station, um, in Manchester. So that summarizes the types of questions that were asked at that one-hour information meeting, uh, and I, that's fine. Anything else? Scott?
I'll just do point, counterpoint. I mean, there were businesses there that have issues, and, um, the issues that they expressed were, and, and some of you, you guys were there as well, um, many of them believe that having a Manchester zip code uh, is good for their business because, um, folks who are, whether they reside in Manchester or some of the surrounding communities around Manchester, when they see the Manchester zip, they, they believe it's a, in a closer proximity to them, and with a Goffstown zip code, they feel that they may lose customers because they, they, people will automatically think that they have to go into the Goffstown Village area for those particular services.
Maybe EDC can help them with that.
Right, so.
Can I just say something to that? Southern New Hampshire, it's interesting because from Southern New Hampshire planning, uh, one of the things that they mentioned was that, um, that is a, uh, a thought process that has been diminishing. More and more people don't look at Goffstown, at, uh, at a town as they've. More and more people don't look at Gulfstown, at, at a town as they've village, one village center. It's becoming more and more common for people to know that there are more village, actually Gulfstown has three village centers that have been identified in, in the plan for the, the alternate buildout that was presented to the planning board. And in that, correct, and in that, in that presentation that they had, that's where they stated that people are, are, that thought process of one location, when you say Gulfstown, that, that, that is waning.
And that was, that was one issue that was raised, the other issue is that they would, in terms of scale and proportionality, yes, as a resident might have to contact their different providers and et cetera, but if you mag, you'd have to magnify, it gets magnified when it's a business who may have a lot of different suppliers or a lot of customers, they'd have to alert, so whereas the cost may be, you know, a certain amount for a residential person to notify all of your customers of an address change, not all of them are really more linked towards email, some of them would just put a slip in the, in a billing or something. But it's a little bit, it's more effort, you know, to notify customers of a business than it is of a, of a resident. And then, you know, simply the last thing in terms of, you know, ordering, whether you had to change your, your envelopes or particular, a sign or, or things of that nature, so there is, there is some cost with respect to the businesses that perhaps a resident would not incur. That being said, if this were to pass, you know, I think, I think Sue's right, I think EDC can help hopefully mitigate some of those challenges for the businesses and assist them, maybe give them a checklist of, of kind of what they need, what they need to do. And just kinda.
Marketing tips.
Marketing tips, point them in the right direction, you know, that, that type of thing, so that was kind of, that was kind of the nervousness that I think came out of some of the business owners and I will say that it's not universal amongst businesses, there were some business owners there who want to see the change.
And they've been very vocal with me.
And they've been vocal, right, so it, it's, there's passion on both sides of it. In terms of the business community, there's much greater passion than I think we're getting from, say, the residents and.
I can tell you personally, as far as when I had my business there, it was a nightmare, it was a nightmare.
It wasn't brought out at the meeting, but it was in, in a private conversation with the postmaster is that essentially this is our second time at bat. The, the concept of switching the zip code was tried eleven or twelve years ago and it failed by sixty-one percent of the people responding to the survey. Some, I understand some three hundred addresses responded. So here we are, post office only allows this concept of change, realigning the boundaries once every ten years. This is our second time at bat, if this doesn't, if it doesn't change, there may not be a, a third round. The post office could tell the community, your residents have had two times at bat, it failed, we're not gonna entertain the idea, you know, ten years into the future as to the, you know. So if we've had, so this is a very important decision for those residents, if they want a different address, they wanna be as associated with a Manchester address or a Gulfstown address, and if they have complications, if we, we're experiencing complications in the government side for EMS, fire, police response, revenue, I can only think that it's not gonna get any better ten years down the road. It's a change that I really support.
Nick?
Just, I know that evening I was, I was at the, the informative meeting and the, the post office had provided us with some, some soft dates. But if you look at the postal operations manual, the actual postal regulations, they put out a publication every year which lists all the zip codes. And their regulations states the implementation date for any zip code changes is July first. So it corresponds with the publication, so by, between May fifteenth and June first, the zip code change has to be told to the residents, and July first it becomes effective, so there really isn't a.
It's not really that soft, it's kinda hard, yeah.
It's not soft, it's actual hard dates, July first.
That's why they're mailing the first two weeks.
I, I agree, I've heard a version of, it's one July is a very hard date nationwide.
Correct, it is nationwide.
Because that facilitates their interaction with all the multiple commercial databases that do.
But that didn't come across that evening, it was kind of a.
Yeah, it was wishy-washy, yeah, yeah.
Maybe, we may, it's, you know, it's July first.
And that was from the postal people.
And I had them review your, that summary, Dave, and they approved that summary, I mean, they didn't seem to have any issue except.
Steve?
One other question that came up was the exemption on, on, on St. Ansem's, and we went down and talked with the postmaster and from what I was gathering, there was no, there was no, there was no procedure for an exemption, because one, because one of these businesses was asking, hey, what, what if I have the exemption in there? So I'm just wondering how we're going, it, it first, with that, I mean, that's still one of the questions I had and one of the, I think one of the issues I raised when we originally came, can you do an exemption, and if so, is that, is that just for one group, can it be for another, who, who allows it, who doesn't it, and how, how those procedures?
The exemption is part of this process, exempting St. Ansem's College, which would remain, no matter how this turns out, they're gonna remain zero three, one oh two. The campus, the college is, resides in Gulfstown primarily, parts of it, Manchester and Bedford. We have not had any safety issues with nine one one, if there's an event on the campus. There's fire, police, there's emergency response, there's never been an issue.
They're not subscribers to cable, so there's no issue with.
Sue brought up the potential for, on other residents having, we are losing revenue due to the franchise fees on Comcast, that's not an issue for the campus. And the college, whether, we would like to see on media releases, it's, I think we'd like to see a media release about Gulfstown but versus Manchester, but the college does have a national presence.
Yeah, but I guess my question is, and I, I understand all those points that you're bringing out, and I think what that gentleman was bringing out was, by the way, okay, there's an, you know, they, they have an exemption and he's saying, well, why can't I have an exemption, and then we go and talk to the postmaster and he knows nothing about how you do this exemption. And so for me, it's from a procedural line, can, can that be done, and if so, why, why is one entity treated differently from another? And that to me, from us as a, you know.
They base it upon the town's request.
No, but I mean, but the town's.
The town's request was to exempt St. Age.
So, I, let me, if I could finish, please, if I could finish, please, I understand that we made that request. I'm still asking from the postmaster, and I believe Nick was there, can this be done, and he looked at us with, he didn't say there was any procedure that he knew of, is that correct? I don't know how, in other words, can this be done like that, and that, that's my question, is that if, if, if there isn't a procedure for exemptions, why, you know, why is one being, why does one have it, one not, I'm just throwing it out there and I won't go into it deeper, I think, I think that was an issue that was raised there. I saw, I, I know other people who bring up that issue and they're saying, why am I being treated differently? And I think part of that, I, I, I think there's a definitely an fairness to that, I'm not affected by the one oh two, oh four, five, I'm, I'm gonna say that, I'm not affected by it at all. But I look at that as saying, jeez, if you're going to vote on this and it's going to be there, it should be the entire of the area, I don't think you should be picking and choosing, that's just. And I don't even think there's a vehicle in place within, from what I'm gathering from the postmaster to do that.
I think everybody in oh three, oh four, five is being affected by it because we have a loss of revenue, we're, the loss of revenue, we're picking it up by extra tax dollars that we're offsetting the loss.
Someone did say that, Thursday night.
Comment along that line.
But I'm saying as far as me being switching or not, in other words, I, I'm not looking for any.
I found it interesting when I asked the postmaster here on Church Street, if his facility had the space to handle an additional workload, if mail for the college was delivered through this facility on Church Street rather than remaining with the facility on Lammy Drive. Basically, he said it would be zero impact because the mail going to the college is boxed up in the regional facility and delivered to Lammy boxed.
Right.
All they do is take the large boxes, put them in a vehicle and drop them off at a campus sorting facility.
That's right.
At the college, so it's taking boxes out of one vehicle, putting them in another vehicle and delivering them. It's not a lot of sorting that goes on, all that is done at the regional facility.
It's not about how the mail's.
It's, if we're carving it out, it's already being done now.
I, I, it's not about how the mail's being delivered, it's not about what box, it's about businesses and other gentleman who was saying, jeez, you know what, I'm not for this. And I'm not saying we should be for it or not for it, but they're saying, I'm not for it, why does someone else get an exemption, and that question will be coming. And I, and I think somewhere along the line, somewhere along the line, you're gonna have to need something from the postmaster saying, how can we exempt out someone?
Because they're the largest taxpayer in town, maybe, I don't know.
Okay, so.
And the largest employer, maybe, maybe that's why.
Right, okay, so, so if I'm another business, what, what am I, top lifer, I mean, you, you cannot do that.
And that, that exemption was given, that exemption was part of the deal handed to us from the national headquarters of postal service. They said, we're willing to entertain this idea, to switch, switch the alignment of the boundaries. And at their level, at the headquarters, they said is, will exempt the college from the process.
No, I, I, I would say that came from us.
Was the local pass, was, was the local postmaster involved, no.
The request came from here.
Right, and I, but I think we cut ourselves short on this issue, there may not be a direct loss of revenue through cable franchise or through auto registrations. But I, I believe the town saw some national wide notoriety with the pumpkin regatta, something as simple as that. It was nationwide news and we were recognized and it adds something to the town. St. Ansem's College has a nationwide presence, primarily because of the primaries, the debates, and if that byline said St. Ansem College, Gulfstown, New Hampshire, Gulfstown would have a national presence, so, so I think we cut ourselves short sometimes.
And sometimes it does, sometimes it does.
Well, I, I have to hand out the Carl Cameron, Carl Cameron, when he covers St. Age, he says Gulfstown because Carl Cameron used to live in Amherst.
But we wouldn't be dependent on a reporter saying it, it would be, it would be there all the time.
Getting the word out to the media.
Well, I found it interesting though, when he brings it up, that the, the stations discuss that. So it does bring up the discussion and.
They can't pronounce it, so they just say Manchester. Look at David.
Manchester.
Yeah.
Well, he has a problem saying Gulfstown.
I just wanna make the board aware tomorrow at the election that we have received a protest petition to Article twelve, a petition zoning article.
All right, which one is Article twelve now, so everybody, since we have it publicly being announced.
That's one where all these individual lots are named to become commercial.
Correct.
And for a protest position, you need a certain percentage of.
Right, so it was validated, the protest petition has been validated, twenty percent of the properties is more, much higher than twenty percent. And this means that a two-thirds majority vote will be required for passage of Article twelve. It was sent to the moderator and the town clerk has a copy of the protest petition because it needs to be announced at the beginning.
Okay, so everybody, the ones who opened the polls, just make sure that that is read.
Want me to email this to all of you?
Can I just make one quick comment to just wrap up the conversation, we just had the most important issue with the zip code change. The last time this went before the postal customers, it was decided by three hundred people.
Right.
If people have a feeling about this, whether it's pro or con, send in that survey.
Well, I, just also as a wrap up on here, and David, I just wanna make sure I cover the points, okay, number one. Our fire chief and police chief are for this change for nine one one and safety issues, okay, for proper and adequate response. The town clerk cannot account for lost revenue, we actually cannot guarantee that our, the census, when it's done in Gulfstown, is actually correct. Grants and federal funding, all forms of funding are based on census, and if we're undercounted on the census, that's also a loss on that. And outside of those major, is there anything that I missed on that? But I would just hope that.
The school district supports this.
And the, the school district supports it, and I just, I just would hate, I would hate.
Going back.
To be in a point, if this does not pass, that there is an, a misdirected response for emergency service and we have a loss of life.
Going back to Selecting Council's point, about three hundred people voted on this twelve years ago, it was sixty-one percent said no. That's like a hundred and eighty no's to a hundred and twenty yeses, if only thirty people had switched their allegiance, we wouldn't be having this conversation tonight. It would have been implemented twelve years ago, a little bit before our internet age, things would have been.
Right, and I'm not, but I'm not pushing either position, I'm just saying, if you have a strong feeling about this, have your voice heard.
Right.
And don't have just three hundred people deciding.
Lot more than just three hundred people that, that can weigh in.
Are affected by this.
It's about eleven hundred and fifty addresses will receive this survey.
Got your mind of a question.
Yes.
Under the non-public, are these items for our.
FYI.
FYI.
Do we have any non-public?
Except for answering your availability on March twenty eighth at six.
Okay, but do we have non-public?
You don't need to.
Okay, do we have any other public business?
Motion to adjourn.
Just cake, just cake.
I have a question before we adjourn, do you have any questions of us?
You've been very patient.
Well, I'm assuming that you're here for a, a badge.
Uh, yes.
How did I know that?
Could they introduce themselves?
Do you mind introducing yourself?
Yes.
Um, I'm Marty Pelletier.
I'm Tyler Breckenridge, both from two nine nine, working for citizenship and the community merit badge. We both appeared last year on the same date for submitting our Eagle projects, and as far as I'm concerned, they're both done.
You mean, you mean they were very well done, is what you were saying, right?
Have they been accepted?
Yes, I accepted Marty's project as completed.
You ordered stairs, right?
Yeah.
But didn't it get like winter, do you do like winter conditions to make sure the spring that it's.
When I signed off, I was responsible for the maintenance of them.
Good to have you tonight.
Yeah, no, we, I didn't know if you had any questions of us.
I thought the stairs were two feet off to the left and you had to move them.
Motion to adjourn?
Steve should second it.
Hang on, he's got a question.
What?
You have a question, you have to ask us before we adjourn.
He was talking about how the stairs were moved, Mr. Ford, you know, how they were moved to the left, something like that.
No, we're, we're good, we're good.
Okay, no, I just, the reason why I asked for your names, because you're going for those badges afterwards, if you request the minutes of the meeting, your name will be here that you were present.
You're in the record, you're on the record now.
You're in the record.
And the whole audience of Gulfstown that's been watching tonight will also know.
And, and they all know that you were here, so.
You do a Google search.
You know? Just so that you know, okay, but when you, when you apply.
I know Tyler, Tyler, and you are.
I'm Marty, Marty.
Martin Pelletier. Martin Pelletier.
Yep, and you have the other fellows?
Yes, Tyler Breckenridge.
Okay, good. All right, good luck with your badges.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your projects again.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, if you have any questions, just contact the town administrator, any, when you do your notes, if there's something you don't know. Don't, don't, don't hesitate, okay, all right, motion to adjourn?
Yeah, it was.
Maybe Nick.
Seconded?
Steve should second it.
I wanna say thank you first.
You're, you're quite welcome, we're gonna miss you.
I wanna, I just wanna say, I, I should have said it earlier, but I wanted to wait till the end. I wanna say, you know, you know, I wanna say thank you especially to department head Sue, Carl, Chief O'Brien, Chief Sullivan, Rick. And I, and I can tell you that, I don't know how many times I would, I would come and see Sue or department heads, ask questions and earlier Vivian came in and made a comment about commitment, I can tell you a more committed group, I, you know, every time you go in there, the time was spent to give you the information you needed to, I think I look back on my time here and the amount of projects ever done, the things that were done. I think this town actually does quite a bit with what they have in front of them, I, I, I think that overall it was, it was, it was an excellent job being done. When you first come, you think, you know, hey, I'm gonna come in, we'll see all these different things and, and all of a sudden you'll learn that you're the one being educated through the process and I can, and I can. through the process, and I can, and I wanna say thank you for that education through the process. Also wanted to thank my family for, you know, for the time I spent away, because it was considerable amount of time away, and more than that, I'd like to thank you four gentlemen, because the pleasure has definitely been mine, because I did enjoy my time here. I really wanna thank you all. And with that, I'll second it, and fade away.
No, you won't fade away.
Thank you, but thank you.
And your vote?
Thank you. Well, I didn't know if Nick wanted to say any-
Ditto, I mean, everything that Steve said, and especially our families, because there were lots of nights that we weren't there, baseball games that we left early for, just putting up with us, and as, as your families do as well. We, we sometimes fail to recognize our families for the, the support they give us.
And there's one thing, there's one thing that you also, it comes kinda natural to us, when we go someplace with our family publicly, and people start coming up with stuff, there you go, town business again, we can't even have a night out.
Grocery shopping.
Yep, absolutely.
I end up, I start out with my wife, I end up with her somewhere else, and I'm, I'm an aisle talker.
You go to your, your, your daughter or your son's graduation? Okay, I know.
Ollie's.
Yeah, yeah, no matter where you go.
Thank you.
You go shopping, okay, but, no, appreciate it.
Is that why you wear a disguise when you go to the supermarket? That hair thing, and that's, you know?
And your vote?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.